Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call to order the June 1 city council meeting. Thank you. We are using a new technology again this evening. This is a remote meeting. And before we move on to tonight's agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting. And start off by asking everybody to mute. On March 6, I issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 24, the governor issued proclamation 20-28 prohibiting meetings that fall under the Open Public Meetings Act, such as our city council meeting, from being conducted in person. On Friday, the prohibition was extended through June 17, 2020. Tonight's meeting will be held entirely remotely. The meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. Tonight, we're using a new virtual meeting platform, WebEx. You may notice that WebEx allows for more attendees to be shown on the screen at one time. And aside from the change in the visual display, our other remote meeting protocols remain the same. I do want to let the council know that while, as you are watching the meeting, you can all see each other. For the most part, half of my screen is still blocked in order for me to have some of these documents open. So I may not see you raise your hand, and you can always use the comment section to let me know when you want to speak. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. And those who provided advance notice are able to make comments under the Audience Comment portion of the meeting. We also strongly encourage residents and members of the community to email and let your council know your comments on any of the topics this evening. So at this point in time, we'll take a roll call of the council members in attendance. Please say "here" when I call your name. Councilmember DeMichele.
Here.
Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
I'm just going to check in with the clerk and see. It seems to me that we're getting some feedback. Keith's audio may be on, even though the microphone's not showing. Councilmember Hall. Thank you. Council President Hunt. Thank you. Councilmember Martz.
Here.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
That's great. We have various staff also participating in tonight's meeting. City Administrator Bob Kowitz, our city clerk, and Police Chief Scott Beerbaum. There are other staff that are also in attendance and on hand for questions if, when we get to the work plan items. Those members of the public on the call, welcome. The clerk or I will call on you to make comments when we reach that portion of the agenda. So a couple of meeting guidelines I'd like to go over. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. I'm going to just check in with the city clerk. Is that for the recording? City clerk?
It's for the recording and also for anyone who's participating by phone.
Thank you very much. Please mute your microphone when not speaking. If you're also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For council members, please continue to use the chat to indicate when you wish to speak, and please identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, or second a motion, or participate in debate. I have a couple of agenda item changes for tonight's meeting. One is a new agenda item, and the second is moving an existing item up on the agenda. First, the new agenda item. Tonight, I am issuing a proclamation declaring a state of emergency and imposing a curfew. There is some corresponding council action that is requested to establish a penalty for curfew violations. This item will be placed as the first item of business under special business. And the agenda item I would like to move, due to the high level of public interest and the events of the last few days, I'd like to move AB 7980 COVID-19 Anti-Bias Resolution up on the agenda to be a special business item immediately following the new agenda item. This also allows Chief Beerbaum to be available for both of those items. The next item on the agenda tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. So please keep your microphones muted, but I welcome you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So the next item we have is special business. We'll be starting with the mayor's proclamation declaring an emergency and imposing a curfew. This is a proposed ordinance establishing a penalty for the curfew violation. And just a little precursor to my comments here this evening, I do want to thank staff, our lawyers, our leadership team for putting this together very, very quickly and bringing it to you tonight. I apologize, it's not the way we normally do our business, but I appreciate all the hard work that everybody put in in the last three and a half hours to get this to us here tonight. In order to protect the health and safety of our community, today I'm issuing a curfew for three nights, from May PM to 6 AM. I just want to check back in and see if everybody's on mute. Thank you.
Mayor Paul.
Yes, Jim. You're on mute, Jim.
Sorry.
Okay.
I don't think we'll ever, any of us will ever learn how to work with mute. I know I haven't. I know that I have taken what I sent out earlier today, and I have broken the ordinance into simply a penalty ordinance and then a proclamation that you were going to issue. I don't know if you've seen the proclamation and the ordinance yet because I've been working on it for the last hour or so since I knew this was coming up. So if you give me a few minutes, I think I would have all of that in proper order. I apologize for not being completely ready.
Jim, you are the city's attorney. Can you help me understand what you mean by give you a few minutes?
Okay. You'll recall that earlier today, I sent to City Administrator Bob Kowitz and to you an ordinance. The ordinance included both a curfew and a penalty for violating the curfew. My understanding is that the direction after that was to break those into two separate documents. One, a proclamation for you to issue, which would actually impose the curfew, and then a separate ordinance for the council that would be limited to the penalty. I have sent you, I have sent you the proclamation, so I hope you have that. And I am in the middle of drafting the ordinance, and that's why I say a couple of minutes to finish that up, and I will be happy to send it. So I apologize.
Is your suggestion, then, that I move to the next item and go through that while you're finishing this off?
That would be great.
Okay. I'll do that. Thank you. Thank you for explaining that. The next item that was moved on the agenda was AB 7980 COVID-19 Anti-Bias Resolution, and the council action this evening is to approve the resolution. At the May 18, 2020 council meeting, Councilmember Martz, who represents Issaquah on the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee, released the SBA's intention to adopt a proclamation rejecting discrimination related to COVID-19, and requested that the city council consider a similar action. At the meeting, multiple city council members expressed support for considering such a statement. Council President Hunt, before we move into council questions and deliberations, would you like to summarize any public comments that you may have received or been emailed on this topic?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We received 10 emails as of earlier today on this topic, and a lot of support. So generally speaking, the emails were supportive of the resolution. They were often broadly supportive. And then in addition, we received emails that shared experiences of family members. One person shared the experience of a black family member in Issaquah and requested that we consider body cameras for police officers. We also received emails in support of the resolution, asking for more actions such as having more community conversations and more engagement of our volunteer commissions on what more we can do as a city to reduce incidences of bias and racism in our community, and also to increase kindness and generosity. We received also an email supporting the resolution and requesting review of our police procedures with regards to anti-bias and training, and then also support and sharing the experience of an Asian American that is a recent new resident of Issaquah, and a message of support that shared with us that they felt that this, that the words here showed dedication and that we were signaling that as leaders, we intend to act on the words that were in the proclamation. That concludes the summary of emails that we received.
Thank you very much. So there is no formal staff presentation this evening on this item, but I did want to let you know that Chief Beerbaum and City Administrator Bob Kowitz are available for questions, and I do believe the chief would also like to share some comments with you. Chief?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, for allowing me to speak during tonight's meeting. I'm here tonight to address the tragic death of George Floyd in Minneapolis, similar events across the country, as well as the recent protests in our region. These events unfolding across the country related to public's trust of law enforcement is challenging to all of us regardless of our backgrounds, ethnicity, age, religion, and more. People are continuing to question how law enforcement operates in and with their communities. Over the last several days, I too have received inquiries from our community members on topics such as anti-bias training, body cameras, and police accountability. I appreciate these conversations and look forward to the continued dialogue, but I'm saddened that it takes tragedy for us to move towards change. We, the Issaquah Police Department, share the concerns and frustration of the tragic events we are seeing in communities across our nation. It's important that we all continue to engage in this conversation and continue to endeavor to make changes within our communities through collaborative means. Public trust is the cornerstone of this issue. Public trust is the cornerstone of policing. The Issaquah Police Department is committed to building public trust, committed to accountability, and committed to working side by side with our community. Officers have dedicated their careers to helping and protecting those around them. We know there is more work ahead on this. We know we will need to work tirelessly to earn and keep the trust of our community. We are embracing the concerns and criticism that have been voiced during demonstrations across the country and in our region. I've reminded our officers to expect to be approached by our community members. They are prepared to demonstrate the patient and active listening they use on a daily basis. We are committed to providing law enforcement services to the community with due regard for the racial, cultural, and other differences of those served. It is the policy of this department to provide law enforcement services and to enforce the law equally, fairly, and without discrimination towards any individual or group. Our officers are trained to continuously evaluate each situation and maintain a caretaken role when working within the community. I have fielded several questions about body cameras for our police officers. Our department does not currently have them. However, we recognize their value for transparency and police accountability and support of the police enforcement. We will continue researching options and policies for all new forms of technology within our department. Technology alone, however, will not resolve the issues we are facing. Technology may help hold someone accountable after the fact, but that's too late. We have a duty to prevent injustice. We need to ensure we continue to hire the right types of officers and train them continuously to meet the needs of our community. I want to ensure our community that we prioritize improving our response to community needs. Our department is committed to ongoing training related to anti-bias, crisis intervention, and de-escalation. All of our employees, police officers, corrections officers, our dispatchers, records employees, and even our administrative assistants, receive this type of training. All employees play a role in building trust within our community. We do not want to forget or diminish the pain and frustration of our communities. The criminal actions of the few over the past few nights are distracting us from the true message. We need to make change. We need to continue to work together to identify, develop, and implement solutions to build safer and more equitable communities. We cannot do this alone. We all play a critical role in keeping collaborative and constructive reform moving forward. I stand here before you tonight to let you know the Issaquah Police Department is committed to this. If you're interested in learning more, we have posted additional information related to our police training and accountability on our department website, and we will continue to develop that as additional inquiries come in from the public. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and I appreciate being able to discuss this important issue with all of you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, you were on mute. ... and it's hard to see if I'm on or not. Thank you for that. Chief, I want to thank you for your comments, and I would like to open it up for councilmember questions or comments if you have any, and if you could use the chat bar to let me know, that would be great. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. This is Zach Hall. Chief Beerbaum, I just want to thank you very much for giving that update, and also I had emailed you a question over the weekend with regard to training, which was where I was really interested in in terms of what our police department does with regard to equity and de-escalation, like you were saying. And one thing that kept coming top of mind for me when I was thinking about training was community engagement. And I told you, you know, when I think of our police department, I think of an officer in particular who does an incredible job with community engagement and genuinely cares about the people in our community. And so I wanted to know a little bit more about how community engagement is tied into policing here in Issaquah and police training, and I just wanted to give you an opportunity to talk to our community about that.
Thank you for that question. In regards to community engagement, it starts from who we hire. I believe part of my response to you earlier was talking about, we look at the values of the candidates that come to our department. We want to make sure that we bring in the right people who want to help the community. That's what they're here for. They are here to collaborate and stand side by side with them. So from the beginning, we're looking for those who want to have community as one of the values: trust, accountability, innovation. Those are things that we look for in our candidates. Once we get them in, we of course continue to develop them on either community problem solving, crisis intervention. We continue to work with them, and we integrate that in with all of our training. If we are doing something even with internal training or our policy manual, everything relates to public trust. That's what this comes back to, and that community engagement. We have an opportunity every day to either increase or decrease our public trust, and that's why that community engagement piece is so important.
Councilmember Hall, thank you for your question. Councilmember DeMichele.
Chief Beerbaum, thank you so much for your comments, and I really appreciate the comment you made about accountability after the fact is not really what we, where we're aiming. We're aiming for elimination of these kinds of discrimination. I have a question and a comment that you and I have discussed before about body cameras. I do support the use of body cameras, but I do have a concern about the privacy and security protocols that go along with that. Police officers, as you know, routinely encounter residents on the worst days of their lives. You provide death notices, and you investigate child abuse and neglect, and you do eldest checks, and people experiencing psychosis and other substance abuse disorders. I'm really concerned that videos of those sensitive situations, which do not pertain to criminality as such, don't end up in the wrong hands. So could you please talk about the security of those videos and the storage of those videos and what you know today about that, that aspect of body cameras?
Yeah. Thank you for that question. I think that is what is, privacy is a big part of the equation for implementing body cameras, and I agree with you. Want to make sure that people have the ability to remain private in some of those crisis moments. There's been a lot of work done at the state level under public records requests to help manage and to help protect some of those videos that are involved with police interactions. Our intent is not to hide those, the police's interaction with the public. The intent is to protect those innocent individuals. Like you said, we want to protect juveniles inside a household or protect somebody in those crisis moments. There has been a lot of work on at the state level under public records requests to help manage and mitigate that concern with what kind of video is available to the public.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Not seeing any additional questions. I'd like to know if there's someone that's prepared to make a motion. Oh, I have a question. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz speaking. So if the council, I mean, the council is going to take some emergency action tonight. This is clearly not an issue that is an emergency action issue, but if the council wanted to consider body cameras, how might we, what might be the framework to consider doing so to understand implications on public health or on public safety and how it would fit with our police model?
Thanks. Great question. Either City Administrator Bob Kowitz or Chief Beerbaum, I'm not sure who would like to take that question.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, let me give it a try. You know, certainly we would be prepared to come back through the budget process if you'd like. We'll be meeting with the council. We'll be talking a little bit about budget process next week. The study session, we'll also be doing a discussion of the budget process in August. So I think at either one of those times, the study session or the council meeting in August, if you'd like to ask us questions or have us do some research, I think that would be the appropriate time, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Martz.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thanks for the question. Again, a little bit of delay sometimes because I use the chat function to save, but if no one else has a question, is there someone who would like to make a motion? Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 2020-08, Rejecting Racially-Based Bias, Harassment, and Hate Crimes Due to COVID-19.
Is there a second? Councilmember Walsh, would you like to go on the record, please?
Yes, please. This is Councilmember Walsh, and I would like to second.
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded. I know this is a little unusual, but there was a lot of discussion about this, and I just wanted to check in with the motion maker and the secondor if you'd like to have the resolution read into the record. And then we'll go to council discussion. Councilmember Martz. Great. Thank you very much.
Yes, please. I would like it read. This is Councilmember Martz.
Yeah. Sorry for the confusion. I am asking whether or not one of the council members would like to read the council resolution into the record. Sorry about that.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Yes, now I understand. All right.
My bad.
No, that's quite all right. So I will read it into now. So, "Whereas since the outbreak of COVID-19, immigrants and refugee community leaders and civil rights organizations have reported a regional and national increase in bias, harassment, and hate crimes, particularly against Asian American and Pacific Islander, Black and African American, Hispanic and Latino, and other marginalized communities. And whereas misinformation about coronavirus propagates fear that hurts people and impairs the ability of first responders and other city services to provide necessary response to COVID-19. And whereas in alignment with the city's mission to foster a safe, vibrant, livable, and inclusive community, the city desires to promote inclusiveness, celebrate diversity, support all fellow community members, prevent the spread of misinformation, and reject hate and bias in all forms. Whereas the city has a history of acknowledging these values through the issuance of resolutions and proclamations, celebrating tolerance and cultural diversity, rejecting discrimination, and proclaiming the city a hate-free zone, beginning with Resolution Number 2002-09. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic crisis, the city has actively shared factual COVID-19 information and anti-stigma messages and resources to the community through its communication channels. Whereas the city desires to further demonstrate its commitment to inclusivity, given the abuses occurred during the COVID-19 outbreak. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Issaquah, Washington, hereby resolves as follows. The City of Issaquah rejects racially-based bias, harassment, discrimination, and hate crimes due to COVID-19 and denounces all COVID-19-related misnaming, blaming, and harassment based on race, ethnicity, place of origin, physical ability, socioeconomic status, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, or religion. The city commits to promoting an inclusive community and urges those in our community to treat each other with respect and work together to overcome all expressions of hate and bigotry." The City of Issaquah, I think that's, yeah. Oh, "The City of Issaquah encourages community members who observe or are experiencing incidents of discrimination, harassment, or hate crimes to report the incident to the Washington State Human Rights Commission, 1-800-233-3247, or to call 911 in emergency circumstances." Thank you.
As the mover of the motion, would you care to start with the comments?
I will, and I can keep my comments short, actually. I'm just going to read two quotes from people who wrote to us this week about this issue. And the first is from a Chinese-American person who recently moved to the city and who said, "The COVID-19 pandemic in particular has reinvigorated tired racist tropes of immigrants as bearers of disease, which in turn have fueled baseless suspicions of a Chinese flu created and released from a Wuhan lab. As a result, Asians and Asian Americans in this country continue to be blamed for the pandemic and subjected to ignorant and hateful attacks." And the second quote is from another Issaquah resident who's also a faith leader in our community. And she said, "Taking this initiative and showing this perspective as leaders is much greater than simply more words on a page to be filed away with the minute. These words signal your intention, and ours, to act on behalf of all people, not just the majority or a trending minority. These are words revealing and encouraging values we share with each other and can share with other communities who might be struggling." This is why I'll be supporting this measure this evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I'm guessing that I was muted a few seconds ago. Thank you, Councilmember Martz, and I'd like to take this opportunity to go back to Council President Hunt to see if there was any other comments received by email that you would like to summarize for the council on this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did summarize the comments that we received. We received 10 comments. I was going to make a comment, though, my own comment, if that's okay.
That's great. Council President Hunt, go ahead with your comment.
Okay. I wanted to thank the members of the community that did write to us on this topic, who shared their specific stories and their specific experiences and the experiences of their family members. It's always very meaningful when we hear directly from the perspectives of people in the community, and it helps us better understand the community that we serve. So I wanted to take a moment to express my thanks for those individuals who shared with us. And I also wanted to, to talk a little bit about that so many of the emails... And I also wanted to talk a little bit about that so many of the emails that we received also asked for us to act and to go further than the resolution in support of the resolution, but to also carry forward in our actions the intent of the resolution. And so I think as we do go into what will be a challenging budget year for many reasons, I do think we need to very strongly consider how we can support our values of inclusivity and anti-bias in everything that we do as a city and make sure that we act on this resolution. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Council President Hunt. Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you, Mary Polly. I will be very brief, and I was going to speak with the purpose of commenting exactly as Council President Hunt did. I think that we received some very eloquent communication from the community this week. And the words that they gave us that we need to put into practice and into action, what we believe, I really take to heart. And I just wanted to say that as we, when we took up this resolution, we did not know the situation and the tragic death of Mr. Floyd and what that, the impact of that in our community. And I think this has really brought us to a point where everything we do has now been through the lens of how can we correct the faults in our society. So I take those comments very much to heart, and I also thank the people who spent the time to send us those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Next up is Councilmember Goodman, followed by Councilmember Ray.
Thank you. Can you hear me? I seem to have confused mute and unmute for a lot for the past few minutes. So I'm now not muted, correct?
You are. We can hear you perfectly.
Oh, yay. Okay. So, of course, I absolutely support messages that reject racially-based bias and harassment and hate crimes. And so I absolutely will be supporting this proclamation. I think the one concern I have is that the proclamations alone is that they're just words, and it's not that words don't matter. I just think in circumstances like these and proclamations like these, that words don't matter enough. These types of proclamations respond to very serious problems and concerns that people have in our communities all across our nation and around the world. So to me, if we want to really make a difference, if we want to move the needle, if we want to influence changes in behavior, and we want to use words for those purposes, then we need to have more than just words. You know, the proclamation itself, in addition to the comments that we received, the proclamation itself actually calls for us to act. It says that we commit to promoting. Those are action words. Those are not, we just believe in this. We committed ourselves to this. We've committed ourselves to these very types of proclamations historically for nearly 20 years now. So I think a year and a half ago, I asked the same questions. What are we committing to? What kind of action are we committing to? What have we done? What will we do specifically? What are we committing to do? The comments that we received from the public in response to the agenda bill and also in response to at least one social media post, they, a majority of them agreed that the actions, that we need actions to attend the words, and I wholeheartedly agree with that. And I realize that we don't have a lot of resources bandwidth right now, but I do have some suggestions on some things that we could do. For one thing, and I talked to our communications folks today just to confirm that I wasn't missing something, we don't have on our website anything that documents on one page the history of our proclamations. And I think that that would be something that we could do, and actually, I was told it could be done fairly easily. So we could compile the proclamations that we have, any actions that we have taken. We can include links to resources. The Suburban Cities Association Agenda that Councilmember Martz sent to fellow council members after our last meeting has links to some resources. We could include those. The city actually has been involved in some events that I think are very positive and consistent with what we have said in proclamations. The city hosted Issaquah Welcomes You last September as part of Welcome Week, and I attended that with my family, as did Council President Hunt with her family. And it was just a fantastic event, and I hope we host some more of those in the future as soon as we can. And I know that there were, is a similar event hosted by Issaquah Highlands regarding cultural diversity, those kinds of things. We could highlight things that we are doing. And we also had a report, a presentation from last July that was in response to requests about what we've done. There may be some information gathered and out that we can include, but we don't have a history of what we've done, and I couldn't find anything easily on our website. And I think if we want to publicize what we're committed to, I think one way to do that is to put all that information together. I don't think we need any formal direction. I think we would just need the administration to acknowledge that they could do this. We also, at least one of the emails that we received was about sending messages of kindness, which is in, again, an action. And I know there are, other cities, Bellevue has a cultural conversations program, which is a partnership between diverse women in the community and the city of Bellevue for women who wanted to enhance their understanding and knowledge of different cultural practices and world views. I think we could look into what other cities are doing with programs such as that. I think we could involve the Human Services Commission in any of all of these efforts. There's also, across the nation, cities, and school districts promote and host kindness weeks. I've typically seen them in my research in January and February. I think this could city maybe able to commit to something like that. And then one thing we already talked about, which was a call to action from at least one community member tonight in our emails, which was the police body and cameras, which we've already talked about could be a discussion during budget. So those, I think there's some things that don't take a lot of resources, that at least have us compiling what we've done. And I think we do need, since we're promising to the community that we are going to take action in these proclamations, I think at least, the least that we should do when passing these is take a good, hard look at ourselves and see if we've actually taken action, taken any actions that we promised to take. But aside from that, I would support the proclamation. With one other aside, and that is with the conversation, as Councilmember DeMichele spoke to, the conversation over the last couple of weeks has changed to the George Floyd tragedy. And so on one hand, it seems unfortunate that this proclamation is limited to that, to the COVID-19. But we also have other proclamations that we have done, and I think publicizing what we have done, that would be consistent with our values and in light of the George Floyd death, I think would be important. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I have Deputy Council President Ray up next.
Hi, this is Chris Ray, and thank you. Words are important. This resolution spells out very important concepts. As we were doing the Pledge of Allegiance today, it struck me when we said, "And liberty and justice for all," and those words, and we say them every time, and they are important, and it's good to be repetitive. But as we've talked about, actions are more important than words and more enduring. And I'm going to take a little different tact on actions and not talk about what the city can do and how we can set policy and, and I have a cat in the background, I apologize, and how we set policy and how we allocate our resources. But I want to talk about a challenge for all of us, which is what actions can we individually to live up to the resolutions that we put forward, both this one about bias and racism and hate and previous ones we've made? And so my ask of all of us is that we make an individual to take actions that will affirm the words we put in our resolution today and that we start to live the values that we've expressed and do it in an overt way. And I'm going to make a slight tweak on the quote, but, you know, to quote Gandhi, "We must be the change we want to see in the world." So that's my ask of all of you. That's all of the councilmembers. That's the mayor. That's senior staff, that we need to start living these words in everything we do. So it's not a budget question. It's not whether we have the resources. It's how do we want to live and how do we want to react to our public? Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. I am not seeing that anyone else would like to do comments, but I'll give a few seconds Okay. Councilmember Goodman. No, no, not Councilmember Goodman. Okay. If there's no first.
Yes.
Oh, yes, yes. Okay. Councilmember Goodman does have her hand up. Councilmember Goodman.
I just went out.
You should be good to go. Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. I tried to pull up the email really quick, and I couldn't find it right off the bat. One of the emails we received from a community member had a link to things that we could do, and I can't remember if it was individually or elected officials' governments. But, so, I may go back out, find that again, and remind people where it is. But there's a lot of stuff online that talks about what we can do as individuals and what elected officials can do as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. If there are no other comments, I would like to, the motion before the council is to approve Resolution Number 2020-09, Rejecting Racially-Based Bias, Harassment, and Hate Crimes Due to COVID-19. I'm going to ask the city clerk to please do a roll call for the vote.
Yes. And Mayor Polly, I'd like to state that the resolution is actually 2020-08. We had a change to the numbering, so thank you. And now I'll call the roll. Councilmember DeMichele? Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. I am going to, at this point in time, move back up to the earlier item. I've had notification from Mr. Haney that both the proclamation and the ordinance are available. Is that correct, Jim?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. And in order for council to be able to see the newly submitted material, could the city clerk please let the council know where they can view these materials?
Hi, City Clerk Eggers speaking. The materials are posted in the packet. If you desire anything to be brought up on screen at this location, just provide direction.
I think that would be very appropriate. So what I'm going to do is go through my introductory comments. I think we should read into the record the proclamation, and then having the ordinance up as the council reviews it would be very appropriate. So thank you very much for that. So to protect the health and safety of our community, today I issued a curfew for three nights, from 8:00 p.m. till 6:00 a.m. June 1st. And, a little bit longer here, today I'm issuing a curfew for three nights, starting 8:00 p.m. June 1st and ending 6:00 a.m. June 4th. During the curfew hours, community members should refrain from traveling in and through Issaquah. There are currently no verifiable threats to Issaquah at this time. However, the curfew is a precaution following continued looting across the region. We are constantly in touch with our regional partners and are prepared to respond as needed to uphold community safety. Out of an abundance of caution, this curfew applies to the entire city limit. We are asking all community members to voluntarily abide by the curfew. The city does not intend to enforce the curfew except for violations that result in risks to public health and safety. In order to align with our community values and the respect our community has with our residents' right to demonstrate in nonviolent ways, we have limited this curfew to use the least restrictive means possible while ensuring that we can protect our community. People are still allowed to travel if they're going to and from work or need emergency or urgent medical care during the curfew. The curfew does not require essential businesses to close. However, essential businesses will not be allowed to have customers during the curfew hours. Business owners are strongly encouraged to close and secure their place of business and to stay in a safe place. Thank you for helping by staying home and staying safe. Following the tragic death of George Floyd in Minneapolis, people across our country have rightfully demonstrated against racism and hate. I'm proud to serve Issaquah where our mission to foster a safe, vibrant, livable, and inclusive community. We reject hate and bias in all forms. I have received some questions related to our community-oriented police department. We have zero tolerance for biased policing. I'd now like to ask our Issaquah Police Chief, Scott Beerbaum, to provide us some more information. Chief?
Similar to those comments that I provided earlier this evening in regards to the curfew and also to the police policies and accountability, I do agree with the mayor. We do have zero tolerance for biased policing. We do have strong policies related to biased-based policing, use of force, and crisis intervention in place to help address that issue. In particular, speaking with the curfew tonight, if that is what you would like me to speak about additionally, we are recognized that due to the surrounding activities in our regional area, we do think it is necessary to enact a curfew to help curtail any possible criminal activity within our community. That is all I have tonight on the curfew.
I see that Council President Hunt has a question. Would you like to ask it now? It's related to the agenda. I'm not sure if this is the time you wanted to ask it or not.
I do also have a question on the curfew, so I can ask that now. Okay. So my question is, I know the curfew was announced earlier today, and it is to take effect shortly. And I wanted to know if, how we can let people know, because I am wondering if people, if there are parts of our community that are not aware of the curfew, and if there would be something like, an alert, like the Amber Alert or something like that, that we could use to make sure that people know about the curfew.
Thank you, Chief. If you'd like to answer Council President's question?
Absolutely. Thank you. Typically, like, the emergency alert system is used for a, like, an ongoing potential hazard situation for our community members. How we are announcing this is through our social media, and we can also utilize our local channels as well. We're taking tonight's opportunities to build to announce it as well. As our officers come across individuals, of course, our approach tonight is As our officers come across individuals, of course, our approach tonight is advisement and encouraging them to follow the the curfew. Education is going to come first. We recognize that not everyone's going to have access to either social media or our website, but we are also, as this information or once it gets approved, of course, we're able to communicate with the local media to help spread the message as well.
Council President, did that answer your question?
It does. I would like to make sure that we, because this was a recent a recent event, I want to make sure that people know that the curfew is in place. So to the extent possible that we can make sure people are aware, I would like to ensure that. Thanks.
Thank you. City Administrator Bob Quizz, did you have any additional information on the communication strategies that we are using to get the word out about the curfew?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the social media, we've, mayor sent a newsletter to, I believe, 8,000 Issaquah residents this afternoon. There's also been press coverage, there's an article posted on the Seattle Times website already this evening detailing our curfew as well as other neighboring east side communities. So we'll continue to make that information available over the course of the next several days.
Thank you. I see we also have a question from Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Martz. I actually have a quick question for you and then a question for the chief. The question for you is, I just want to make sure we're not discussing whether or not to have a curfew. You have already enacted a curfew, right? The question is on the penalty element of the curfew, right? Is that correct?
That's correct. And what it may, it may be helpful right now if I read into the record the, is it a proclamation, I believe, on the curfew? So that actually anybody watching the meeting will know what we're talking about. I can do that if you think that would be helpful. And then we can clarify with the actual businesses of the council. This is a proclamation declaring a civil emergency and in order imposing a curfew for June 1st, June 2nd, to 3rd, and June 4th, 2020. Whereas the killing of George Floyd by a police officer in Minneapolis on May 25th, 2020 has generated anger and outrage across the United States, resulting in mass demonstrations. And whereas the city of Issaquah supports the people's right of free speech and lawful assembly guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Washington. And whereas Governor Inslee's Safe Start Phase 1 Order prohibits public gatherings in King County as a means of slowing the spread of COVID-19. And whereas in many cities throughout the United States, including Atlanta, Phoenix, New York, Houston, San Jose, Dallas, Portland, and Minneapolis, demonstrations over the killing of George Floyd have turned violent and have led to property destruction, damage to businesses, and injuries to demonstrators, police officers, business owners, and bystanders. And whereas violent demonstrations have occurred in Seattle, Bellevue, Renton, Toquilla, and other cities in Washington over the last three nights, resulting in police officers being assaulted with rocks, bottles, and other projectiles, police vehicles being set on fire, a Seattle police rifle being stolen from a police vehicle, closures of Interstate 5 as protesters marched down the freeway, use of Molotov cocktails, and the looting and damaging of stores and other businesses. And whereas many cities, including Minneapolis, St. Paul, Louisville, Milwaukee, Columbus, Atlanta, Portland, Cincinnati, Denver, Seattle, and Bellevue have declared states of emergency and imposed mandatory curfews. Whereas the National Guard has been mobilized and is standing ready to provide assistance to cities in the event that assistance is required to maintain safety and order. And whereas demonstrations are planned to gain for additional days. And whereas the presence of large numbers of people in limited space, combined with the clear, present, and escalating threat of violence, presents an unacceptably high risk of serious injury to innocent people, including lawful protesters, and significant property damage. And whereas those events are rapidly evolving and the Issaquah Police Department needs tools to be able to plan for and effectively control the situation in order to protect the lives and property of the citizens of Issaquah and those again engaged in lawful protest. I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, Washington, do proclaim an order as follows. Section 1, a declaration of civil emergency. For the reasons set forth above, a civil emergency exists in the city of Issaquah, requiring and authorizing me to exercise the emergency powers as provided to me in Chapter 38.52 RCW and the City of Issaquah's comprehensive emergency management plan. Section 2, curfew imposed. A general curfew is hereby imposed throughout the city of Issaquah on the dates and during the hours specified in this section. The curfew shall be in effect from 8:00 p.m. June 1st, 2020, until 6:00 a.m. June 2nd, 2020, from 8:00 p.m. June 2nd, 2020, until 6:00 a.m. June 3rd, 2020, and from 8:00 p.m. June 3rd, 2020, until 6:00 a.m. June 4th, 2020. No person shall enter or remain in the public right-of-way, in the public parks, or in any other public place during the hours that the general curfew is in effect. The general curfew may be enforced by the Issaquah Police Department, other law enforcement agencies, and the military. The general curfew shall not apply to law enforcement personnel who are actively engaged in the performance of their duties, military personnel who are actively engaged in providing assistance pursuant to the request of the mayor or city administrator, emergency personnel, and other city and government personnel who are actively engaged in carrying out their duties, city and government officials with valid identification, workers traveling to and from essential businesses, or representatives of the media authorized in advance by the mayor, the city administrator, the chief of the Issaquah Police Department, or their designates. For purpose of this order, the phrase actively engaged in performing or carrying out all of their duties includes traveling to and from the location of those duties to begin and end a work shift. A copy of this order shall be transmitted to the governor of the state of Washington and the King County Executive. To the extent practicable, a copy of this proclamation and order shall be made available to all news media within the city and to the general public. In order to give the widest dissemination of this proclamation and order to the public, as many other available means as may be practical shall be used, including but not limited to posting on the city's website and using other emergency communication channels. I know that due to the timing of the curfew and the way the information was distributed today, that most council members and members of the public have not had the chance to read or hear most of those words. Just going to go back to the notes right now to see where we are with the questions. And I believe Councilmember Martz is next up with a question for the chief.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. Chief, I, help me understand, the penalty for this is up to one year in jail and $5,000. How did we arrive at those numbers?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just perhaps a point of question for you. That is now, you've just read now the proclamation, there is an ordinance. Would you like to have that read into the record as well before questions? Because the question from Councilmember Martz deals with the ordinance.
Yeah, good point. I think I'll do that as well if the council agrees that that would be helpful to the conversation. So let me read that in as well.
And Madam Mayor, I think perhaps the clerk could place that up on the screen. Much of the first portion of the ordinance duplicates your proclamation. And so perhaps we could focus on the whereas clauses which deal with the with the action. But I think it'd be important for everyone to see the language. So I see that the clerk has put that up. Madam Mayor, would you, would you like to read that or have the clerk read?
I think that would, thank you very much, City Administrator, that's very helpful. I think I'll have the city clerk read the portions of the ordinance that are in addition to the language that I've already read in the proclamation. City Clerk? It's good to see that even the city clerk can't find the mute button all the time. Makes the rest of us feel normal.
And I'm checking with Deputy Clerk Geezer.
Hi Tina, I'm sorry, I couldn't find the mute with my screen shared, but I'm I'm here. And I will gladly read this ordinance into the record.
Thank you.
An ordinance of the city of Issaquah, Washington, making violation of the curfew imposed by Mayor Polly's June 1, 2020 declaration of civil emergency to be a criminal misdemeanor, declaring an emergency and establishing an immediate effective date. Whereas the killing of George Floyd by a police officer in Minneapolis on May 25, 2020 has generated anger and outrage across the United States, resulting in mass demonstrations. And whereas the city of Issaquah supports the people's right of free speech and lawful assembly guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Washington. And whereas in many cities throughout the United States, including Atlanta, Phoenix, New York, Houston, San Jose, Dallas, Portland, and Minneapolis, demonstrations over the killing of George Floyd have turned violent and have led to property destruction, damage to businesses, and injuries to demonstrators, police officers, business owners, and bystanders. And whereas violent demonstrations have occurred in Seattle, Bellevue, Renton, Toquilla, and other cities in Washington over the last three nights, resulting in police officers being assaulted with rocks, bottles, and other projectiles, police vehicles being set on fire, a Seattle police rifle being stolen from a police vehicle, closures of Interstate 5 as protesters marched down the freeway, use of Molotov cocktails, and the looting and damaging of stores and other businesses. And whereas many cities, including Minneapolis, St. Paul, Louisville, Milwaukee, Columbus, Atlanta, Portland, Cincinnati, Denver, Seattle, and Bellevue have declared states of emergency and imposed mandatory curfews. And whereas the National Guard has been mobilized and is standing ready to provide assistance to cities in the event that assistance is required to maintain safety and order. And whereas more demonstrations are planned. And whereas the presence of large numbers of people in limited space, combined with the clear, present, and escalating threat of violence, presents an unacceptably high risk of serious injury to innocent people, including lawful protesters and significant property damage. And whereas these events are rapidly evolving and the Issaquah Police Department needs tools to be able to plan for and effectively control the situation in order to protect the lives and property of the citizens of Issaquah, correction noted, and those engaged in lawful protests. Whereas on June 1, 2020, Mayor Polly issued a proclamation of civil emergency and order imposing a curfew for June 1, 2, 3, and 4. And whereas in order to provide for the enforcement of the curfew, the Issaquah City Council has been asked to declare the violation of the curfew to be a criminal misdemeanor punishable as provided in IMC 1.06.010A. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Issaquah, Washington, do ordain as follows. Section 1, violation of order imposing curfew penalty. Pursuant to Issaquah Municipal Code, Section 1.06.00A, any person violating or failing to comply with the curfew order imposed by Mayor Polly in her June 1, 2020 proclamation declaring civil emergency and order imposing curfew for June 1, June 2, June 3, and June 4, 2020, shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and upon conviction thereof shall be punished by a fine not to exceed $5,000 or by imprisonment for a period not to exceed one year or by both such fine and imprisonment. Section 2, declaration of emergency, immediate effective date. For the reasons set forth above and in Mayor Polly's proclamation of civil emergency and order imposing curfew dated June 1, 2020, the Issaquah City Council finds and declares that a public emergency exists due to the potentially violent demonstrations experienced by other cities that makes this ordinance necessary for the immediate protection of the public health, public safety, public property, and public peace. This ordinance, having been declared an emergency and having received affirmative votes of at least a majority plus one of the whole membership of the Issaquah City Council, is not subject to referendum and shall become effective immediately upon adoption. The city clerk shall publish this ordinance or a summary thereof in the ordinary course of business. That completes the reading.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. Back to the questions. Thanks you for the suggestion, City Administrator. I think that helps to have them both read into the record. I'm going to start with Councilmember Walsh, followed by Council President Hunt.
Well, do we want to go back to Councilmember Martz to ask the question?
Oh, yeah, good point. Thank you. Thanks very much. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question was for the chief. And the question is, on the subject of the fine of up to $5,000 and the term of imprisonment of up to one year, how did we choose that dollar amount and that potential imprisonment amount? Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Martz. The Issaquah Municipal Code states in Chapter 1.06 penalties, it identifies general penalties. And any criminal penalty per municipal code unless otherwise provided does fall as a misdemeanor. And under the same conviction of a misdemeanor under this code should be punished by a fine not to exceed $5,000. So it is per code is how we arrived at that. In this general situation, we need to be able to have the ability to effect a an arrest. Therefore, that's why it is a criminal penalty and not a civil penalty.
Does it have, I'm sorry, I just have a follow-on. Does it have to be that amount? I mean, could we choose a lesser dollar amount and a lesser period of imprisonment? If we so chose?
The code would say a fine not to exceed $5,000. So that does give the flexibility. If Jim has a different take on the code, that would be great for his input.
I'm sorry, but I'm not sure it answered my question. Would the council choose a number different than one year and $5,000? A smaller number on either of those? That's that's my question.
I will defer to Jim Haney for that. Do you have an answer to that?
Yes, I do. As the chief said, we we just use the general penalty that is in the Issaquah Municipal Code. That's the penalty that applies to any violation of the code. So that's what we use. You could alter the penalty and do something less. As the chief also said, the fact is, is that the code says imprisonment for up to one year and up to $5,000. That generally leaves it to the discretion of the judge as to what penalty he or she is going to impose. But the city council could alter the penalty and do a lesser penalty if it wished to do so.
Thank you very much, that answers my question.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Councilmember Martz. It looks like Councilmember Walsh is up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Walsh. The other, I quite have the similar comments and questions to Councilmember Martz, and so I'm interested in having that conversation when we get to that point. But my other question is, this does not address people who are living homeless and since they do not have homes to go back to, how do we plan to address this without adding criminality to that?
Thanks for the question. Chief?
Sorry, making sure my video is up and running. Obviously, we can address that on a case-by-case basis. Ultimately, the intent of the curfew is to address people who are going to be committing crimes of violence, crimes of theft, looting. That is what we're really focusing on for addressing this. So individuals who are experiencing homelessness, just being out, that is not the intent of the enforcement for this this curfew. We are truly focusing in on the people, those who are out and committing additional criminal acts in the community.
Councilmember Walsh?
So is that stating that you don't plan to have penalties associated with that? Or you don't plan to enforce and have a sense that you would try to get people experiencing homelessness off the streets in response to this curfew?
The latter would be the answer to that. It is ultimately, it's not the, the penalties are decided by the judge. We are just enforcing the law. Again, we have the ability to utilize discretion for enforcing this. And in this case, you bring up an excellent point for addressing those who are experiencing homelessness. That we, of course, do not want to create additional burdens for them as well.
Councilmember Walsh, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Great. I believe next we have Council President Hunt, followed by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. First question is somewhat technical, but in the ordinance, it talks about a curfew for June 1, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. But then in the newsletter, and I think the intent is to have it for the evenings of June 1, 2nd, and 3rd, so three evenings. So I wonder if we should just make that more clear. And I also wanted to clarify the intent, that it's for three evenings.
Thank you for the question. Chief?
Yes, thanks for that question. Technically, you know, as of midnight, it does transfer into a new day. So I understand the need for clarity. But as of midnight, then it does transition into the 4th. So it would be going through until 6 o'clock in the morning of the 4th is what the intent of the curfew would be.
Okay. I think then to address that concern, if we can just be clear on the times, because it's also not even the whole day. It's specific hours within the different days. So that would address my concern, just for consistency and clarity on that. And I do think it's
Council President, can I ask you a question? Do you mean within the documents or do you mean within our messaging to the community?
Well, I think the messaging within the community is simpler and is more clear. And then I would want to make sure that the hours are clear in the ordinance as well.
So you might be recommending some change to the language in yours. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, thanks. Thanks for clarifying my question. I also have a question on, as was mentioned, the wording of the mayor's part of the ordinance, or the mayor's proclamation. And then are the one that council will be considering. The wording of the first sections, the whereas sections, is very, there's a lot of overlap in the two. And I'm wondering if council were to consider changes to those, would it be possible to carry over those changes so they match? Or is that, what's the procedure there?
I'm going to let our city attorney, Jim Haney, talk about that. And also maybe about the timing of if the proclamation is already in place and the curfews are in place and the ordinance has not been approved, how do those pieces all tie together?
Well, you're exactly right, Mayor, that the proclamation is already in place. So we can't go back and, you can go back and amend it if you wish to amend it. But at the present time, the proclamation is already in place. You've issued it. As far as the reason why we included those recitals in the ordinance was to provide the basis for your declaration of an emergency, because you do have to have a basis for declaring an emergency to make an ordinance effective immediately. But you can make changes in that. This is your ordinance, so you can do that. But as the mayor said, the proclamation's already been issued with these recitals.
Just to clarify then, the reason that that information was included is because this is an emergency ordinance that's going into effect immediately. Jim, we can't hear you.
I don't think, as many meetings as we've had, I don't think any of us have learned how to use the mute button effectively. Anyway, yes, that's the reason why they are in there is because the council needs to be able to have in the ordinance a basis for declaring the emergency. So this was to give you that basis to do that. And I use the findings that were in the mayor's proclamation, because that was the, those were the findings that were available and consistent with what the proclamation was doing.
Thank you. Council President Hunt, before we go to Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. But just to clarify, our findings and our basis in the proclamation that council adopts doesn't have to be exactly the same as what the mayor has in her proclamation. Is that correct? We need to have a basis for why we're issuing an emergency proclamation, but it doesn't have to match.
That's correct. It doesn't have to match exactly. You just need to have a basis for declaring an emergency.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Goodman here. Jim might want to unmute his mic, because I think I have questions that he's going to be asking. So the ordinance just addresses this, this curfew. Is that right?
That is correct.
So if for some unfortunate reason, we needed to extend, the mayor needed to extend the curfew, or we needed to do another one, the council would need to consider another ordinance. Is that right?
That is correct.
So is there something that we can do to put something permanently in place so we don't have this problem again?
Yes, and the city administrator and I talked about that, that what is needed really is an amendment to the city code chapter that relates to emergency management. And that would provide in that chapter for a penalty for violations of mayoral proclamations. But given where we were tonight and not wanting to look at a broader policy issue, we drafted it just to address this particular curfew.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I would think that, given the protesting issues that we have and COVID-19 and the predictions by health and other experts that we could experience a future incident that might require us to take other actions, curfews, for example, other emergencies, that I would, I would like to see us put something permanently in place soon so that we don't have to continue to cobble things together in the future.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I am not seeing that there are any other questions, but I will give a moment to make sure that every, there we go. Councilmember Hall, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Zach Hall. Chief Beerbaum or City Administrator Bob Kowitz, could you just repeat what was said earlier? So it sounds like the enforcement part is up to the police department in terms of how to enforce this ordinance. So someone minding their own business might not necessarily fall under that, but someone who might be causing violence to persons or property would fall under that? Is that correct?
Yes, the, well, the ordinance is written in a way also to address people who are traveling to and from like essential business, who are not necessarily intentionally trying to violate the curfew. We do have, this is another tool that we can utilize to ensure the safety of our community. If we do have somebody who is out, of course, our practice and procedure would be to contact them and just inquire to, you know, why they were out. And then if they were just going to their own business, or if they were headed home, of course, we would want to make sure that they were allowed to do that. The intent of this is, we do have the discretion to be able to address that. And like Councilmember Walsh's questions, of course, there are going to be situations where people may not be able to, they might be homeless, and we want to make sure that they have the opportunity to maybe get shelter or to at least not be impacted by this curfew as well.
And that was our police chief. Thank you, Scott. Are there, checking over here?
Follow-up question, I apologize.
Councilmember Hall, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate that. This is Zach Hall. I had a second question, just to get clarification around grocery stores. So that's an essential business. So just to clarify, starting at 8:00 PM, they can continue to do their own essential business, like restocking shelves and whatnot, but they can't serve the community in terms of customer interaction. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowitz. And I see that you have a comment for the group before we go to a question from Council President Hunt.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to reinforce a comment that the mayor made earlier in the crafting of her proclamation as being the least restricted means possible. Many of the other curfew ordinances have varied in restrictiveness. And I think the mayor's direction to the city staff was to be reasonable with this, to be reasonable for people who were traveling, to be reasonable for the homeless. This is meant to be reasonable, but it's also meant to protect the public health and safety of the residents of Isidqua. So Mayor, I just wanted to point out that that was part of your contemplation, direction to your staff in crafting this proclamation was to be as reasonable as possible with this.
Thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowitz. And we'll go to Council President Hunt for a question.
Thank you. I had a question.
There's an alert right now.
I know.
They're all looking at, correct.
Yeah, amber alert. But it is an amber alert. So there, the question about peaceful protesters in our city. So it was stated earlier that the intent is not to, the intent is not having anything to do with peaceful protesters and that the city does support the lawful demonstration of peaceful protests. And so I just wanted to confirm about that and ask about what are the plans for any peaceful protests? I know we have had some peaceful, small protests in the city today and last few days, I believe.
Yes, we have. I'm going to go back to Chief Beerbaum to walk you through what their policing approach will be with peaceful demonstrations. Chief?
Thank you. I would like to address peaceful protests. Of course, we support people's ability to demonstrate and to assemble peacefully. The intent of this curfew is not to hamper the ability for our community members to voice their concerns or to voice their outrage of what's occurred across the nation. Our intent is to allow them to, again, continue to peacefully protest. The groups that have come to the city or the groups who have come to the city hall, we have already gone out and we have spoken with them and we're ensuring their safety as well. Our intent is to make sure that they are able to safely be able to have their voice heard. So that is our approach. Our intent for this is to continue to allow that. The intent of this is not to hamper that in any way.
Thank you, Chief. Council President Hunt, did that answer your question?
It does. I'll have some more comments later. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I just also wanted to add in that this evening I was in contact with one of our larger neighborhood associations who is getting notices about different events that are planned. And I told her that's great, because we want to support that. And that I would appreciate if she had the name of an organizer or could reach out to an organizer to have them contact us so that you are able to understand what activities are planned and where and when. And we are there to protect and serve our community. So I hope that that message is out there amongst all of our neighborhoods, so that we are all working on this together. So thank you for that. I'm not seeing any other questions. I'll give a few seconds to see if anyone else would like to have a question. And if not, I'd be looking for someone to make a motion. What I'd like to clarify for anybody that's watching from the public is that the emergency proclamation, including the curfew, has already been enacted. And what council will be looking at this evening for their action is the ordinance related to the penalties associated with violating that curfew. Seeing no other questions, do I have someone that will make a motion? Councilmember Goodman?
I'm happy to make a motion, but I need the language.
I'm sorry, I missed that last part of your comment.
Oh, here it is. I would move to adopt ordinance number
2907,
making violation of the curfew imposed by Mayor Polly's June 1, 2020 Declaration of Civil Emergency to be a criminal misdemeanor, declaring an emergency and establishing an immediate effective date.
Is there a second? I believe the second was Councilmember DeMichelle. For the motion maker, would you, Councilmember Goodman, would you like to start us off with comments or discussion?
Sure. I can't remember if black is, can you hear me?
Black is on. We can hear you.
Okay, okay. Well, you know, we have to have enforcement measures. So obviously, I will support this, but I, my bigger concern is that, not bigger, but my attendant concern is that we have something permanent in place so that we don't have to keep doing this in the future, whether it's next week or next month or five years. So can I get somebody to tell me what the plan is for bringing a permanent proposal forward?
Sure. City Administrator Bob Kowitz?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We could do that at a meeting. We've got one additional meeting in the month of June. I would say we could have it by your first meeting in July.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Goodman?
No, I guess the only comment that I have that, my understanding was that the up to year in jail and up to $5,000 is consistent with the other criminal penalties. And so I would agree with that, unless my mind is, unless other council members have different opinions, then I would be willing to listen to that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Councilmember Martz next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Speaking of that, I have an amendment that I have entered on the chat. I move to replace, shall be punished by a fine not to exceed $5,000 or by imprisonment for a period not to exceed one year in Section 1 with, shall be punished by a fine not to exceed $250 or by imprisonment for a period not to exceed 90 days.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. There is a motion for an amendment on the table. Is there a second?
This is Councilmember Walsh, second.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Discussion, Councilmember Martz, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I would. Bellevue is at $250 and 90 days. And I believe Redmond is also at $250 and 90 days. I believe in the spirit of this ordinance, which is to empower enforcement of the curfew, but I believe $5,000 and one year is disproportionate to the offense. I think if somebody does something while they're out and about during a curfew, they should be charged for that something. But if you're just walking down the street and you don't have a good excuse, spending a year in jail doesn't seem proportionate to the offense committed. So I want to help public safety, both for residents and for peaceful protesters. But I need it to be a more proportionate response. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh has a comment.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. It was Renton, that is $250 and 90 days. Redmond is actually similar to the original motion. But I would say to continue what Councilmember Martz was saying, I just believe that we need to, this is not the time to add the potential for significant penalties. And I don't think that is what our local police or local groups would be interested in doing. But I think it is our responsibility as policymakers to provide limitations within that. And so that would be my interest.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go to our city attorney for a comment before I get to questions from Councilmember DeMichelle and Council President Hunt. Jim?
Yes, my comment was that if you're going to change the penalty, you also need to remove the language in the ordinance that refers to Issaquah Municipal Code, Section 1.06.010A. Since that is the penalty, that's where that language came from or that penalty language. So, you need to remove that in addition to making it shall be punished by.
Thank you. And so, if there is consideration for the amendment on the table, there may be some additional language that's required in order to make it a complete change. The next one up for a question on the amendment is Councilmember DeMichele.
So, just to clarify this for myself, if someone is out breaking windows at the library, for example, during the curfew, they could be charged for vandalism or whatever the crime would be separately, and then they could also be charged for violating the curfew. Is that how this would work?
Sounds like a question for our chief. Chief?
I apologize. I've had some audio trials, and I missed the last about 20 seconds or so. Can you please repeat that?
Councilmember DeMichele.
Yes. So, just for clarification of how this would work, if someone were out breaking windows at the public library during the curfew, you would charge them with whatever crime they've committed plus violation of the curfew. Is that how that would work?
Yes, most likely, yes. That's what we would utilize. It would also give us an opportunity to address somebody before they got to that point. So, maybe they were casing an area or they were actively searching an area to maybe break into. It would give us another tool to then hopefully deter that individual. But yes, it would probably be an additional charge on top of whatever kind they were actively doing.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Does that answer your question? Excellent. Council President Hunt, followed by Councilmember Ray.
That was very... Councilmember DeMichele asked a similar question to mine. So, my question would be that this provides an additional tool, but any law that would... Any law that's broken, the penalty that normally applies to that law would not be reduced by what we're accepting today. Is that correct?
Chief?
That is correct.
Thank you.
If we were to adopt this amendment, is what I meant. Thanks.
Correct. Thank you. Councilmember Ray, you have a question?
Yeah, let's start with a comment that I think it is good to give our law enforcement the tool that they need so that people don't go and smash the windows at the library and that you can get ahead of it. And this is why I think there is great value in having this ordinance in place. My question, and I'm not sure if this is a Jim Haney question or a Scott Beerbaum question, but do we have other misdemeanors with different levels of fines in the municipal code? Because this would create a misdemeanor with a different level of penalty. Then I kind of got the impression that all of our misdemeanors were $5,000 and a year imprisonment. And is that a big deal?
Chief?
We do have some of our misdemeanors that do have a lower fine than the 5,000. Ultimately, what it does is it does give the judge a range of opportunity of how they would... How would they hold somebody accountable? The judge is well aware of people's financial situations. People is well aware of the situation surrounding each individual crime. So, it gives the judge, of course, that leeway for what is, would be necessary or what would be the best approach to handling this. But there are a couple of other misdemeanors that do have a lower value, and I will continue to look those up.
Thank you for that. Also, Chief, just want to make it clear that it's understood. It is not the police, the arresting officer, or the jailer that sets any of these. It's all established through our local Issaquah Municipal Court with Judge Stewart. Okay. Thank you very much. I am not seeing any additional questions on the amendments. Are there any additional questions or comments on the amendment? Council President Hunt?
This is Council President Hunt. The cities that had the $250 and 90 days, that was Bellevue and Renton, is that correct?
This is Councilmember Walsh. That is correct.
Okay. And that is specific to violating of their curfews for those cities. Is that also correct?
Yes. And that was specific to curfew notifications today, not something that is in their wider code section.
Okay. Thanks.
I don't see any other questions in the chat box, but I'll leave it up for a second, and I will move back to the motion, the amendment. I have a question for our attorney. Is it possible to make this amendment as stated, or does it require additional language in order to effectively address all of the edits required to get this changed?
Well, the code section, or excuse me, the section of the ordinance begins by saying pursuant to Section IMC, Section 1.01.010 or 1.06.010A. If you make this amendment, that language is incorrect because this penalty would not be subject to that. So, that language would need to be changed as well.
So, if the maker of the motion and the second of the motion agree to add some language that would say, and to delete the end first section, whatever you just read, first part of the sentence, that would then make a complete action in this?
That is correct.
Councilmember Mars?
Madam Mayor, I would... Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. I would support that change. I'm confident that staff understands the intent of the amendment with that change. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would ask, I would just check with the second, Councilmember Walsh, in agreement with adding additional language to this amendment?
I support that change, but I do question whether or not we also need to remove the mention of misdemeanor, since that's a defined term.
I'll leave that question for Mr. Haney, and I'll ask the city clerk if it's possible to provide some additional language into the proposed amendment so that when I read it, it is complete. Mr. Haney, the question about misdemeanor?
I believe that language should remain. Misdemeanor is the lowest level of crime that you can have, and as the chief indicated earlier, this needs to be a criminal offense in order to allow police to arrest. So, it's just a matter of penalty.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Checking in with the city clerk, is there a different version of the proposed amendment?
Mayor Polly, what you could do is ask unanimous consent to amend the amendment to remove the sections referenced by the city attorney. If you don't hear any objection to that, then we could proceed to vote on the amendment as amended. You don't need to change your wording.
Thank you. Do I need to take a vote for unanimous consent or just ask for anybody who is opposing?
Just ask if there's anyone opposing the striking of the sections referenced by the city attorney. If no one objects, then we can proceed to the vote on the amendment.
Thank you. Do any council members object to the removal of the language as proposed in the amendment? Seeing none, I will assume we have unanimous consent, and we'll move on to the motion itself. In order to... Oh, I see the clerk...
I'm sorry. Okay. So, there was an objection to striking those sections, so we then need to vote on the amendment as modified?
There was an objection, and so the council needs to vote on the amendment as modified. Okay. I don't have a modified version to read.
So, why don't I state the question before the council, which is to adopt the amendment stated by Councilmember Martz to strike shall be punished by a fine not to exceed 5,000 or by imprisonment for a period not to exceed one year and to insert shall be punished by a fine not to exceed $250 or by imprisonment for a period not to exceed 90 days and to strike the two references to the Section 1.06 in the municipal code.
Thank you very much. We'll be doing a roll call vote, I assume, for this? Thank you. Can you take the roll call vote on the amendment as read?
Yes. Councilmember DeMichele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Sorry, this is to the amendment.
This is the amendment, which includes the language that was read into the record as well as the removal of language from the beginning part of it.
Nay.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
That's six, eight ayes and one nay. Councilmember Goodman is the proponent or opponent, excuse me.
Thank you. So, the amendment passes with a six to one vote. Moving back to the main motion, are there any other amendments that are being proposed? And if you could let me know in the chat box, that would be great. I think Council President Hunt has an item. Council President Hunt?
Yes, thank you. This is Council President Hunt. The first item that I would like to change is I would like to clarify where it says the dates on imposing the curfew. I think it should be the dates and the hours instead of just the days.
Do you have a specific language or are you... And we need to have a more specific amendment.
Okay. So, there's... It appears a few times. So, on the first... On the first... Okay. On the third page at the top of the page, it says imposing curfew for June 1st, June 2nd, June 3rd, June 4th. And so, I would amend that to read June 1st through... Curfew for June 1st, 8:00 p.m. through June 2nd, 6:00 a.m. June 3rd, June 2nd, 8:00 p.m. through June 3rd, 6:00 a.m. June 3rd, 8:00 p.m. through June 4th, 6:00 a.m.
Would your motion be to revise any reference to date in the resolution? Is it a resolution? Yeah.
Yes, so it's...
Okay. So, the motion is to revise any dates in the resolution to read the curfew shall be in effect from 8:00 p.m. June 1st, 2020 until 6:00 a.m. June 2nd, 2020. From 8:00 p.m. June 2nd, 2020 until 6:00 a.m. June 3rd, 2020. And from 8:00 p.m. June 3rd, 2020 until 6:00 a.m. June 4th, 2020. Is that your intent?
Yes. And there's one other time at least that I can find that it appears, which is in one of the whereas clauses. So, it says whereas on June 1st, 2020, Mayor Polly issued a proclamation. So, it also would need to be changed there.
Motion to amend any references to dates to the following.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Councilmember DeMichele. Discussion, Council President Hunt, would you like to start the discussion?
Thank you. Yes. So, I am making this amendment because I think it needs to be very clear that the curfew is only certain times and also that it's a date certain that we're making these laws, which are on such short notice and that council has only seen just today. I think we need to be very clear that these are the times and the days that this is applicable to. And then, as Councilmember Goodman has brought forward, we may need to make further changes to our long-term code. But for this, I think it's very important that we're clear about the date and time that we're applying this very specific law to.
Thank you. I am not seeing anyone else lined up for comments right now, but the clerk has proposed a simpler motion if the motion maker and the second agree, which is to revise any dates in the ordinance to include the times in the proclamation. If there is no issue with the maker of the motion, we'll proceed with that one. And the second was Councilmember DeMichele. Would anyone else like to speak to this amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of this amendment to revise any dates in the ordinance to include the times in the proclamation will be doing a roll call vote.
Councilmember DeMichele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
That's seven ayes.
Thank you. The amendment passes unanimously. I believe, Council President Hunt, you had another proposed amendment.
Yes, thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I want to make an amendment that clarifies that there are many demonstrations occurring across the country right now that are peaceful and lawful and actually, as it says in the mayor's newsletter, are rightfully expressing the anger and outrage right now. So, my intent with a amendment is to clarify that because I'm concerned that we talk about in the first whereas clause, we talk about the killing of George Floyd by a police officer has generated anger and outrage across the United States resulting in mass demonstrations. And then, we start talking about demonstrations that have... We start using that same word, demonstrations, with the whereas clause about violent demonstrations have occurred in other cities. And I just want to make it clear that there's a difference, especially because in our city, we've seen peaceful protests and rightful, lawful protests. So, I guess my... If somebody wants to... If one of my fellow council members wants to help me with wording, I would be open to that. But I'm going to propose that we use some... That we remove, I guess, some of the wording. So, we, for instance... Or maybe we use a different word instead of demonstrations in the next parts so that there has been violent acts in neighboring cities. Again, to clarify that we're using demonstrations in the first clause, and then we're using that same word.
Well, a couple of suggestions. Yeah. Let's put it up on the screen, and then I'd like to ask our city attorney, Jim Haney, to make a suggestion on language that may clarify the intent that you're trying to meet. Mr. Haney?
Caging back and forth between one part of my desktop and the other. My suggestion would be to add a whereas clause in between the second and third whereases, which acknowledges that in many cities, there have been peaceful and lawful protests and And then, you know, you go on in the next one that says in... And maybe you say in other cities. In the next whereas, you say in other cities, including demonstrations have turned violent. So, you know, I don't know exactly how you want to word that, but I'm just suggesting maybe you add a whereas clause to acknowledge that there are many... maybe you add a whereas clause to acknowledge that there are many, in many cities, there have been peaceful and lawful protests.
Jim, let me try something else with you today that I noticed at the mayor's conversations, is that most of the mayors are in agreement that a lot of the violence that is occurring shouldn't be attributed to the demonstration that was planned, but should be recognized as violent and destructive behavior. Because we're not, we're, we are convinced that we do have protesters and demonstrators out there with peaceful intent and appropriate civil behavior and other entities that have other motives, which are opportunistic, that are associated with the demonstrations. And so, I think we're trying to, many of the mayors are trying to separate the nomenclature so that we're making a distinction. And I think that might be what Council President Hunt is getting at, but I'll let her chime in.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt. And, and yes, that's my intent. And so, I, I don't, well, I appreciate the suggestion from City Attorney Haney. I, I don't know that it addresses that intent because it's still talking about demonstrations over the killing of George Floyd have turned violent. And I think maybe instead of demonstrations in those clauses, we say that there have been violent incidents that have led to property damage and then not use the word, not use the same word demonstrations in those other sections. Again, because I, I think that we, we are supportive and the intent of this curfew is not to, the intent of this curfew does not have to do with limiting people's ability to lawfully protest and to lawfully and peacefully demonstrate. So, those demonstrations that are lawful, which occur in the same cities that we talk about here as having violence, I want to clarify that our intent is not to address those demonstrations, it's to address concerns over violent incidents.
Yeah. Thank you for that. And Jim, Mr. Haney, this is sort of an evolving issue that you are working with, with all of the cities, but the mayors in the region had the similar thought of trying to separate and distinguish between what is lawful and acceptable and appropriate and what is opportunistic, violent and criminal. So, I'm not sure if the clerk would like to go over, are there any track changes shown related to this yet or not?
Mayor Polly, I, I think that there was disagreement among the wording that was placed, so I, we have a clean slate at the moment.
Okay. Yeah, Councilmember De Michele, you have a suggestion for the group.
Thanks. So, I totally agree with the intent of Council President Hunt's language. And I think that, well, I think first of all, we need to put language in there that the overwhelming majority of the protesters have been peaceful and respectful of both people and property. And then, I'm wondering if we could use the word peaceful protesters and then in the other instance, use the word rioters. And I think that I, I agree completely with your remarks that there is an intention here to disrupt what is a very valid and legitimate protest movement for an agenda that we don't fully understand. But I think we should distinguish between the two groups and I also think that we should acknowledge that most of the protesters have been very peaceful, respectful and are very concerned about discrimination and hatred in America. That's my suggestion for wording.
So, this is why we don't do this on camera and I appreciate you being so patient with us today because this all came about at 3:30 this afternoon and the work that you're doing is, is really important right now. I have a question for the city clerk and for the city attorney, and that is if we proceed to a different portion of the agenda this evening and allow some time for a potential amendment to be written up, is that appropriate and would that be effective use of our time?
Madam Mayor, let me jump in. I'll say yes, I think it would be an effective use of your time. I'm sorry I've been in and out with internet problems at home, but I think if you would, perhaps the clerk would agree if there's a motion to table, we can come back and work on this and have it for, for the end of the meeting.
That sounds great. I also see that our city attorney, Jim Haney, has already got some suggested information. So, I think this needs a little work and if I could have a motion to table to allow some proposed language to come, we'll move forward in our agenda to our remaining items.
Mayor Polly, this is Tisha. I think that if there isn't any objection from the council members, that you could proceed through the agenda, so allow for an opportunity for objection.
So, I'll provide an opportunity right now for any council member to object and if we see none, we'll move on to the next item of our agenda for now and come back. And I have, Councilmember Goodman, would you like to make a comment?
Not at this time. Never mind.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, seeing no objection, we'll move into other areas of our agenda right now. The next item this evening is audience comments and I'd like to check in with the city clerk and see if anyone has signed up this evening.
No one has signed up to speak tonight.
Thank you very much, Tisha. Also, just take this opportunity as well to remind anyone watching this live tonight or on video that comments can always be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isqwa.gov. As we go through the remaining items tonight, comments received by email on any of tonight's agenda items will be acknowledged by the council president, Council President Hunt, under the corresponding agenda item. So, the next item of business this evening is committee and regional report, although I am going to stop for a second and see if Council President Hunt has a question on the agenda.
Hi, thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I wanted to check in with council members. I had wanted to do this at a point early in the meeting, but I will do this now. So, we have some other items on our agenda this evening. We also have an executive session and then at the last minute, we had the curfew item added. And so, I wanted to check in with my fellow council members about the regular agenda items because as far as I know, we could postpone those, but I wanted to, I wanted to check in and see how people are feeling about that and if you want to proceed focusing on the curfew item, which is an emergency item, or if you would like to continue to proceed through the entire agenda this evening.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Councilmember Martz would like to comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. I just want to point out that unfortunately, I have two time-sensitive issues that I intend, as we discussed two weeks ago, I intend to cover in for good of the order and they have to do with getting direction from council in regards to two action items that are going to be coming up in that week, at next week's Sound Cities Pick Committee Meeting. So, before people comment on what they want to do with the regular agenda, understand these are, these are issues, if, I mean, you don't have to talk about them, everybody can just let me vote the way that I want on those, but I would prefer to get guidance from the council and intend to this evening. Thank you.
Council President's point is a good one. We had discussed earlier this afternoon or later this afternoon, right before the meeting, about the different kinds of issues that you are working on tonight, some that are emerging and emergency-related and others that are regular business. So, any comments on, oh, I see Councilmember Ray, sorry, Councilmember Hall followed by Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Zach Hall. I just wanted to ask what consequences, if any, there would be to pushing the items that we have on regular business off to another meeting because I know we've already done it once before. So, I'm curious if there's any time-sensitive nature there.
City Administrator Bob Cook? Who may be having connectivity issues. Deputy City Administrator Snyder, are you on the phone or on the meeting?
Mayor Polly?
Yes.
This is Tisha. I would just like to point out that there isn't a motion or a pending item before the council at the moment. We are under committee reports and so, it may be more proper to bring this conversation up when we get to a council action item.
Okay, thank you very much. So, let's move through the committee regional reports and the mayor's report. I'm just checking with the city clerk, the consent calendar would be considered a council action item?
Yes, someone could object to the consent calendar and talk about agenda timing. I think the most appropriate time to have that conversation would be when you get to the regular business items.
Okay, that takes us pretty far into the meeting. I think Council President Hunt wanting to have the conversation earlier was to see, take the temperature of the council on whether or not they were wanting to deal with the business, all the regular business this evening. So, I guess we're moving to committee and regional reports. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Zach Hall. I have no report at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember De Michele?
Metro.
Now, we can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. On May 19th, King County Metro hosted a joint meeting between Eastside Transportation Program, the South King County Transportation Board, also known as Skateboard, and the North King County Transportation Group, which is also known as Seashore. During that meeting, we heard some pretty grim statistics from Metro. From May 11th through 15th, the average weekday bus ridership was estimated to be about 110,000 riders compared to 416,000 riders for the same time in 2019. And that's a 73.5% drop in ridership. Similarly, an estimated 74% fewer passengers are using Metro's access paratransit service. We did hear a few days after this presentation that they are seeing signs that ridership is slowly increasing and due to that, they have re-instituted some routes, or excuse me, they've re-instituted some buses, but no re-instituted routes yet. Metro is projecting that will take 12 to 18 months to recover ridership and they admit that those are best-case scenarios. Metro is receiving 242 million from the CARES Act and it will help, but it doesn't come close to closing the gap of lost revenue and ridership. Over the next two years, Metro is projecting an estimated loss of 2 billion in revenue and expects a permanent 20% reduction in bus service. There are a couple of trends that they're monitoring, particularly the number of community members who are now telecommuting and who may remain telecommuting for quite some time or even permanently and how they are going to address that trend in their planning. Katie Chalmers, who is Director of Transit Planning, said, "We never wanted half-full buses ever before. Now, we have to think about how we provide service efficiently while ensuring safe social distancing." So, there is, there are some good, there is some good news. Chalmers also reported there's been a 30% observed increase in bicycle use during the shutdown and Metro is seeing how they could complement that increased bicycle ridership. And also, she stated that Metro's long-range goals have not changed and no one expects them to change in the future. So, this is my first report. My second report is from the Eastside Human Services Forum. That group met on May the 21st. Eastside Human Services Forum is a coalition of four eastside cities, Issaquah, Redmond, Kirkland, Bellevue, healthcare providers, human service agencies, faith-based organizations and school districts. They are working on an organizational review right now that will determine the uniqueness of their mission and how the work might be structured to be more efficient and effective. We heard a legislative report and eight bills that Eastside Human Services Forum identified as essential were passed, but there is, of course, a great deal of concern about how those bills will fare during a special session, if the governor calls a special session soon to look at the budget impacts of the COVID-19. After the meeting, a letter, several letters and a report were circulated, which I want to talk to you about under good of the order. And those are statements of guiding principles that the group is hoping to see implemented during any special session related to the budget. There is also an interest in scheduling a summer meeting and focusing on advocacy efforts during the special session and that is, that was pledged that that would happen. And then, finally, I have a Healthier Here Governing Board meeting this coming Thursday on June 4th. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I have no report tonight.
That was fast. I shouldn't have muted myself. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Goodman here. Eastside Fire and Rescues Finance and Administration Committee met last Wednesday and we were receiving information about revenues, fees in particular, and the committee asked for additional information about fees and most specifically about invoicing and efforts to collect and that information needs to come from a third-party vendor. So, we are going to get information at our next meeting in June and when there, if there, and if there is, becomes a recommendation from that committee, then I will come back to this body for feedback. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. The Pugent Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board is again not meeting this month. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee, however, will be meeting electronically this, oh, sorry, next Wednesday, June 10th at 7:00 PM. And we will be looking to get resolution on the two open action items that I'll be discussing this evening in For Good of the Order. And there will be as well a discussion about King County Emergency Management Coordination and COVID-19 impacts in response. So, it should be a good conversation and I'll talk more about those two action items in For Good of the Order. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Deputy Council President Ray?
Hi, this is Chris Ray. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. On May 21st, the Salmon Recovery Council of Raya 8 met. Raya 8 is the technical name of our watershed. We discussed work plan projects, including a number of projects that will improve salmon habitat in Issaquah and the full list of projects is available on the Raya 8 Salmon Recovery website. The next meeting of that council will be July 16th. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Council President Hunt. Next up is the mayor's report. So, there will be an executive session this evening to discuss pending and potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 per N1, per NI. The item is expected to last 30 minutes and no action is anticipated in open section. National Day of Prayer and Remembrance. Many municipalities across our nation have called for a National Day of Prayer and Remembrance to take place today, June 1st, 2020, to honor the more than 100,000 souls that have fallen victim to the deadly coronavirus and to give respect to the family and friends who love them and will miss them. I would like council and anyone observing this evening and staff that's attending to please take a moment of silence and share that with our community. Thank you. Thank you very much. I also have a couple of proclamations that I would like to do tonight. I have two, one for the LGBTQ Pride Month for June and the other for gun violence. I have two, one for the LGBTQ Pride Month for June, and the other for Gun Violence Awareness Day, which will be on June 5th. LGBTQ Pride Month proclamation. Whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall riots which occurred in June of 1969 and are generally recognized as the catalyst of the LGBTQ rights movement, and whereas every individual is equal before and under the law and has the right to equal protection and equal benefit of the law without discrimi- discrimination based on race, national, or ethnic origin, color, religion, sex, age, or mental or physical disability, and whereas the long and ongoing struggle of transgender, lesbian, gay, bisexual, and other sexual minorities for basic civil and human rights continues to provide inspiration to all, and whereas Issaquah celebrates the history and diversity of our city's lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender community and promotes a society in which all residents can live free from discrimination, and whereas Pride Month is an opportunity to celebrate this harmony in which we coexist, I encourage all citizens to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists, respect the rights of all people, and to celebrate the great diversity of our city. My second proclamation is about Gun Violence Awareness Day. I also proclaim June 5th, 2020 to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Issaquah. Whereas every day, 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides every year, and whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other high-income countries, and whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a mayor's highest responsibility, and whereas the pandemic facing America has drastically impacted communities and individuals sheltering in place, which may result in situations where access to firearms results in increased risk in intimate partner violence, gun deaths, suicide by gun, and unintentional shootings, I encourage all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. The last item in my report this evening is a COVID response update. The governor did announce last Friday a new approach to reopening businesses and resuming community activities. This approach will allow King County to apply to enter this new phase referred to as Phase 1.5, and for the state to evaluate that request. While many counties have been approved to begin reopening steps, King County was not as of May 31st. I am really encouraged by this new approach, and will provide community updates on timing as they are known. We are committed to increasing community opportunities for activity and engagement in a safe manner and to supporting all of our businesses in the steps they need to take to get ready to welcome customers back. And that concludes the mayor's report this evening. Next on our agenda this evening is the consent calendar, which was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
This is Councilmember De Michele. Yes.
This is Councilmember Walsh. Yes.
Thank you, councilmembers. Does any councilmember desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Before we move to the motion, Council President Hunt, do you have any email comments to share on any of the consent calendar items this evening?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did receive one email comment from, from a member of the community about one item on consent, and that was regarding the listing of the newspaper of record as the Seattle Times, and the community member wanted to make it clear that Issaquah was declaring a newspaper of record, suggested that we reword this as declaring newspaper of record of Issaquah to make it clear that Issaquah is separate from Seattle. And that concludes comments on the consent item agendas.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion? Council President Hunt?
This is Council President Hunt. I move to approve the consent calendar as listed in this evening's agenda.
This is Chris Ray. I'll second the motion.
And moved and seconded, we'll do a, have the clerk do a roll call vote?
Councilmember De Michele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Marts?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Now we will come back to Council President's original question. The Council President and I spent a lot of time on the phone today talking about items that were coming, were emerging and of an emergency nature, and one of the thoughts that she had was she wanted to check in with the council and assess the situation, and in particular, if there was any breaking news that might impact the communities, the surrounding communities, our community this evening, whether or not council still wanted to proceed with the regular business of the evening. So Council President Hunt, would you want to re-ask your question?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I think that the mayor summarized my question well. I wanted to take the temperature of the council or to check in because we did have items that were added, and we also have several important and time-sensitive items that will be discussed at good of the order, as was mentioned earlier, as well as an executive session. So I wanted to check in, and I will also point out that we have not yet finished the curfew item, so that is also on our plate.
Thank you. I have a question from Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Zach Hall. I just wanted to go back to Deputy Council President Ray's and I's shared question, which was, are there any consequences to delaying the items under regular business this evening to another meeting, or any time-sensitive nature associated with these agendas? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will point out that at the present time, we still have our police chief on with us, and we are monitoring the situation and feel comfortable that we are able to keep staff here for your questions. City Administrator Bob Kowetz, are you able to join us and weigh in on consequences of delaying any business on regular business this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I apologize. I was offline there. Problems. You know, we are anxious to finish this. We believe we've answered all of the council's questions. We will be coming back to the council on the 9th of June with additional updates on capital projects and the work plan, so we would ask that the council consider moving forward. We think that, again, we've answered all of the council's questions, but we are overdue on these budget amendments and reauthorizations, and we'd like to finish that.
Madam Mayor, I have just unmuted you.
Okay, thanks. My husband even told me the spacebar could work, but it still doesn't feel quite natural. Council, Deputy Council President Ray, Councilmember Hall, does that answer your question, or do you need additional information? We'll start with Councilmember Hall.
Um, yeah, I do need additional. I guess what I'm getting is, and if I'm not characterizing this, please correctly, please feel free to correct me, but what I'm getting is, you know, we've answered all your questions, and it would be really nice for us to move forward with this regular business, but is there anything of consequence that would happen if we didn't consider that this evening in terms of potentially pushing other things that we need to consider down the line, et cetera? And if you answered that and I missed it, I apologize.
Like, councilmember, members of the council, we're trying to get back to normal. We're trying to move on with projects. We have a pandemic. We have a global economic crisis, and we now have riots in the streets. So it's difficult to know when we can do that. Certainly, if the council wishes to delay it, that's the council's prerogative. Again, your staff has worked very diligently to provide you the information. This is, again, we think we have everything before you. We are living in extraordinary times. We hear continually from this council that you wish to move forward with projects. Having this reauthorization and these budget amendments move forward will allow us to do this. If you wish to wait, we will continue to wait.
Deputy Council President Ray? Your comment?
As much as I know we have a very full agenda this evening, and we still have a lot of work to do, I think we need to address these two outstanding agenda notes so we can get on with the business of the city. And, you know, I think that system, or City Administrator Buckwitz is correct. We, the city has provided a lot of answers to our questions. I think we can move through this pretty quickly.
Any other comments? Councilmember Goodman, did you raise your hand? No. Not sure where you all are. I'll check back in with Council President Hunt. Oh, there we go.
Councilmember Walsh, looks like she would like to make a quick comment.
Councilmember Walsh?
This is Councilmember Walsh. I think we can probably get through that item quickly enough. I am concerned about having the executive session in addition, but such is the nature of work when there are emergency situations. So I would be comfortable, considering these regular business items tonight, I would just ask that we maybe take a short break before moving on to that next set of business.
That sounds great. I have a comment from Councilmember Marts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to proceed with the full agenda this evening for two reasons. One is that I like long meetings, and as we've discussed. The second, though more seriously, is I don't know what's going to be on our plate in two weeks. There's a lot of unknowns out there, and I would like to have the ability to respond to the emerging situation in two weeks with a lighter plate. So, but I would also love to have a short break. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not hearing from everybody. I'm hearing sort of a mixed consensus. So I'm going to come back to Council President Hunt and just verify. I'm sensing we should go forward tonight for several good reasons that were stated. I also wanted to ask our city attorney, Jim Haney, at what point it would be most productive for us to go back and look at the ordinance we were looking at earlier? Is that something now we should leave till after we're through regular business? And yes, we're going to have a break too. We'll, we'll have a five-minute break as well. City Attorney Haney?
Mayor, I think that's up to the, you and the council. Whatever is your pleasure. I have made some changes and forwarded a redlined version of the ordinance to everybody and to the city clerk, so hopefully we're ready to proceed on that whenever the council wishes to proceed.
Okay, so just taking the temperature of the council. The next item will be a break. Do we want to come back and work on the ordinance or go through regular business and do ordinance at the end? Councilmember De Michele?
I agree with the people with, excuse me, now we need a break.
Now we need a break.
Yeah, let's plow ahead. Let's plow ahead. I'd like to get this done and authorize the city administration to move forward, so let's just, let's just dig in and get it done tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman, did you have a comment?
Yes, I guess I would like to go back to the ordinance first, and assuming that doesn't take an extraordinarily long, extraordinarily long period of time, then plow ahead. If it does, we may think differently. Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any other comments? If not, my suggestion would be that we have the, we take a five-minute recess till 9:30, and we come back, and the city clerk can put up on the screen the redlined version, if that's okay with everybody. We'll take a five-minute break. five-minute break. We're back from our recess, and it looks like we have six of our council members at their stations. Here comes number seven. You know, I wonder, or Tisha, I wonder if we could get the revised version. Thank you very much. And Jim Haney, if you could walk us through this, that would be helpful.
Okay, there was, first thing that was expressed was wanting to acknowledge that there were lawful and peaceful protests and demonstrations, and to indicate that this violence was conducted by others. So that is what the revisions to the whereas clauses are. First, the, there is a third whereas added that in many cities throughout the United States, demonstrations have been lawful and peaceful, as demonstrators have protested the death of George Floyd. The next section talks about in other cities, individuals have used the demonstrations as an excuse to engage in violent criminal acts and have inflicted property destruction, et cetera. In the next whereas, we say violence has occurred rather than violent demonstrations. And then in, on the second page, the whereas clause, it's, it's the third one down, I added language to say that demonstrations are planned and individuals may use those demonstrations as an excuse to engage in further violent acts. In the last, in the next to last whereas clause, I did correct my typo. I apologize for that. I was rushing through this today. Then in the last whereas, I did insert, as Councilmember Hunt wanted, the actual times and dates of the curfew. In the last whereas, I deleted the reference to IMC 1.06.010A, because that is where the one year and $5,000 came from. And then in section one of the ordinance, I have first deleted the first phrase, again referring to the IMC section, which is no longer applicable. I then changed the language to include the times for the curfew in, in the section. And then lastly, I changed the penalty to be $250 for imprisonment, not to exceed 90 days, or by both such fine and imprisonment. So I believe that is all of the changes that the council requested. And I, I hope I've caught everything.
Thank you, Jim. That was very helpful. I do have a question for the city clerk as to where we are in our process, because I don't believe that there was an amendment that was fully formed for the council to consider. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So I do see that we have a comment from Councilmember Walsh, but before going there, I'd like to go back to Council President and ask if you have any language for proposed amendment.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. Well, I, I actually think maybe we should proceed to Councilmember Walsh, as she has a comment on the grammar. So before I propose, and then we have to change it again.
I'm just thinking procedurally, discussing these changes without having a motion on the table, I just want to check in with the city clerk. Even if we had a motion to amend the resolution to differentiate between peaceful and violent actions, peaceful demonstrations and violent activities, could, is, do we need something like that in order to just proceed through the changes that are presented below?
Mayor Polly, so I think this could be approached a couple different ways. The simplest way might just be to have someone move an amendment to substitute the version of the ordinance that the council previously considered with this version, which incorporates many of the amendments that were made and adopted previously. As part of that, someone could finesse the language, or they could make that motion, and then the council could work through any corrections.
Okay. So I'm, I'm hoping that that's clear. If we had a motion to substitute this revised version of the ordinance, I would, and a second for that, and a successful vote, then the council would be able to work on this language. Is that correct, city clerk?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone prepared to make the motion to substitute? Council President Hunt.
Thank you. I move to substitute the language of the ordinance with the language that is presented on the screen.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Chris Ray, I'll second.
Deputy Counsel President Ray, seconding. Discussion. Councilmember Walsh, you had some comments.
Yeah, just a minor comment. I believe in paragraph four, it says, and to inflict rather than inflicted. That's it. I agree with all of the changes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the, on the changes in the revised ordinance? Council President Hunt.
Thank you. I wanted to speak to the amendment. I appreciate the help with the wording. I think it does make, it does make it clear that there are many people rightfully protesting and lawfully protesting, and, and it does separate the intent of the curfew. It makes it more clear why we're taking this action. So I, I support those changes. I wish that the changes were in the mayor's ordinance that actually made the curfew, but that, I, I don't think that that's possible. So at least we can have that in the ordinance that sets the, at least we can be clear on the intent in the ordinance that sets the fines, the penalties. So I do support this, and I think it's very important that we're clear with our intent, and that we're clear that we're supporting the community's right to free speech, and also that we are supporting, or we are taking these measures to protect the community, and so that the police has a tool to stand with the community and work with the community and protect the community from actors that would be violent.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Seeing none, assuming that we are ready to vote on the main motion, which is to substitute. And I'm wondering if the city clerk can provide me the language in the comment box so that I can read it. And I'll just, I'll just provide a comment back to the council while we're waiting for that to show up. And we've heard your conversation, and we've heard your concerns, and we have much more messaging to go out. So thank you for sharing that. Councilmember Martz, would you like to speak to the motion? The motion's actually on the table right now.
Yeah, I have, I'm sorry, I have a motion. It's a point of order.
Okay.
You just said, vote on the main motion. I don't think you meant that, right?
Substitute motion.
Right. So we, there's still time. If we're voting on the substitute motion, is that the final motion associated with this bill? Or are we moving to substitute, and then there'll be a, and then there'll be a vote to adopt?
I believe what we're voting on at this point in time is the substitution. And then, city clerk, would the motion following that be to approve and adopt the ordinance?
Yes. For two votes, two votes ahead, one on the substitute, one on the final ordinance.
Thank, thank, thank you, Madam Mayor.
So the first vote is on the motion to substitute the amended ordinance for the original ordinance. But correct, city clerk? All in favor, or sorry, city clerk will do a roll call vote.
The vote to adopt the substitute ordinance. Councilmember DeMichelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Council, Deputy Counsel President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. I am going back in our agenda packet to look for the main motion. Is there any council discussion on the main motion? And I'm trying to just pull this up. Which is to adopt ordinance number 2907. Is there any other additional discussion? Okay, we see lots of comments coming up. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I'm going to support the main motion regarding the ordinance. I wanted to clarify just what my concerns were with the penalties. I think first, I'm concerned that, that it, the different, creating the, I'm still going to vote for it, but I just wanted to clarify my vote against reducing the penalties. I think reducing the penalties just creates even more consistency between the penalties for a violation of this ordinance and for other misdemeanors. I realize that the chief mentioned that there may be other lower penalties, some lower penalties for some other misdemeanors. We haven't heard any commentary on that, and that's fine. It either creates inconsistencies or it creates more inconsistencies. I have a concern about that. I don't see a reason to have the ordinance penalties be less than for other misdemeanors. I mean, the purpose of this ordinance really is due to an emergency, and it's to help prevent crimes and to create a lesser deterrent. Doesn't seem appropriate. And number three, police and judges always have the discretion. So I don't really see any difference here. I just wanted to clarify that. All of that said, I will be supporting the main motion for the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. So as, as most people know, I'm from the Twin Cities, and I lived in Minneapolis for five years while I went to college. And I actually worked at a liquor store in South Minneapolis. And this afternoon, I saw a video of three white youths beating an African-American youth to a pulp, right in front of the liquor store where I worked. And it was, is, one of the busiest corners in the city of Minneapolis, and there were no officers in sight. And this was not, to quote the great Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, "This was not the language of the unheard." And I want to contrast that with a video I saw this, also this afternoon, from my friend, Councilmember James McNeil of the Boffel City Council. And it was he and his family standing out on a corner, waving a sign that talked about peace and justice, and being against violence. And there's such a, you just can't, there, there are two sets of images that don't, almost don't relate to each other, and they represent such a difference in what we're seeing right now. And I have confidence, I'm not normally a big fan of limiting First Amendment anything, but I am confident that with this vote this evening, the city of Issaquah will use this curfew to help enable the kind of community response that the best in what we've seen, and even the anger that's out there, without giving in to the people who would profit in chaos. So this is why I'm supporting it this evening and proud to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Councilmember Hall?
Well, thank you, Mayor Polly. I'm happy to let Councilmember DeMichelle go first.
Oh, did I miss Councilmember DeMichelle? I'm sorry about that. Councilmember DeMichelle.
That's fine. Thank you, Councilmember Hall. I, I wanted to share a story that I heard today. I sat in this afternoon with a group of people on the east side who are addressing the rent crisis. And they asked individuals who are in that situation to talk to us. And they talked to us with the express purpose of sharing their stories. So the one that I want to share with you is a family here in Issaquah. The wife is a waitress, and of course, has been out of work for two months. The husband is a physical exercise coach, and he, he again, has been out of work for two months, and they are really facing dire situation. The daughter in that family was working until yesterday. And the reason she's not, no longer working is that the business where she worked in downtown Seattle was destroyed by the rioters. And so I would say to the people who are engaged in that kind of activity, if you think that you're taking a blow against what you regard as an oppressive system, I would ask you to think about who the victims are of this, of these actions. And as always, it's the marginalized and the poor who really suffer the consequences of these kinds of actions. So I am very happy to vote for this measure. I have great trust in our police department to administer it in a fair and equitable way, and I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichelle. I'm sorry about that. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Zach Hall here. That was a really compelling point I'm stewing on that. Mostly because I really want to get there, but I'm actually really struggling with this one. And I appreciate our conversation in the amendments that we've made, and the stories that we've just heard. But as of right now, I don't think I'm going to get there tonight. I don't think I can support the ordinance. I appreciate that we call out innocent people and lawful protesters, but it seems to me that we're largely focused on property damage. And I worry that this perpetuates the thought that property is more valuable than lives and people's ability to protest the murder of lives of color. Whether or not that's our intent, I think it sends the wrong message about legitimate protests, given that we don't know yet whether or not the potential for property damage even exists here. I guess I just keep going back to, everyone keeps saying that the intent is to, is not to prevent lawful protests, but in my mind, it does, no matter what, it just, it does. So I believe that individuals have the right to protest the murder of Black America whenever they want, unless there is a clear danger that, that we can point to that I'm just not seeing right now. So I would love for my colleagues to help turn me around. I think councilmembers DeMichelle, because I really do want to get there. And I think Councilmember DeMichelle's point was a really good one that I'm still stewing on. So anyways, I just wanted to let everyone know where my head's facing at right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember, or Council President Hunt?
Thank you. I think my comments are maybe a little bit different. But I, one thing that I think is really important about this curfew and about all of the, so the, the curfew is also being implemented in the context of other laws that are changing around COVID-19. around COVID-19 and other measures that are being enacted to protect the community in the context of COVID-19. I think that it's, it's super important that we are very clear with, that everybody gets the information about the changes that are being made. I've heard a lot of concern from community members that they don't understand the rules and how things are changing. And I think that with all of the anxiety and, and all of the pain, we talked earlier about the number of deaths from coronavirus. And I just think we, we as a city can be very clear with our communication. We can use all of the channels. It was mentioned that we should use emergency channels to get this information out, and I think we should do that because I think we need to be very clear, not only with the changes in laws, but with the intent and with, and be very transparent. I also made the amendments that I made because I think that we need to be very clear with our intent, and I do think the changes that were proposed by the city attorney help with that. But as we continue, we, we need to continue to explain why we're making these changes. I, I think that this, I think we need to give the police the tools they need to protect our community, and so I am in support of this. But I take to heart the concerns that are voiced by Councilmember Hall. And I think we need to be clear why the law is the way we are proposing it in this ordinance, and that it is, it is not about peaceful protest. It is about violent actors that would use, as it, as it says, that they would use this as an excuse to, to be violent, and that we don't accept that as a community.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Next up, I have Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. I want to start with the story. Several years ago, I was, had a conversation with a police captain, and we were having a conversation about misdemeanor warrants and whether or not those were something valuable. And he said something to me that I keep going back to tonight, which is, he said, "We probably don't need them, but when we do and we need a tool to de-escalate a situation, they are a valuable tool for us." And though our police chief didn't say this, one of the things that I believe that this ordinance does and the curfew will do is to give our police a tool for de-escalation before property or personal harm is done, property damage or personal harm is done. I'm going to have to personally harm a cat, though.
Be very careful, you're on camera.
I know, I know, no squeaks. He went down very gently. But, but seriously, this is a, this is a really important tool for our police to take action before a crime is committed. So it is during this very difficult time a preemptive tool so that they can take action before someone is hurt or before property is damaged through rioting, as we've seen in a number of cities. Sure, you should be able to legitimately protest whenever you want, but we're not saying that no public gatherings are permitted. There's still time for legitimate protests between 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM. And it's also not forever. It's for four days. And it's an opportunity to give everybody a chance to breathe and help us get through this difficult time. So I think this is a, this is important. I'm supporting it. I think it's something we have to do to make our police as effective as they can keeping us safe.
Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. Councilmember Walsh, followed by Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I think the important thing to recognize here is that the curfew has already been set by the mayor. That proclamation has already been made. And what we're looking at here is a temporary response of potential penalties for that. And so what we're looking at is how do we respond if someone is breaking curfew? We've already said we're going to be lenient and let people know we're only going to use it in the case of circumstances where we need to use it as a tool. We've adjusted down the potential penalties to more fit what the criminal, potential criminal behavior, noncriminal in some cases. And so I think when we're looking at that vote, I would also say this isn't necessarily about property. We've seen many instances in Seattle and Bellevue where people who were peacefully demonstrating were injured. And so this is also a tool to help us potentially prevent that as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. My comments were largely almost exactly what Councilmember Walsh said. I just wanted to emphasize that this is, that this is focused on the nighttime. And I would find it hard to believe that any good comes from anything happening after dark, where people typically are home and not watching protests anyway. And so I would tend to believe that probably no good is going to, mostly no good is going to come from that. So I don't really have too much heartburn with a temporary curfew that is limited in, limited in time. And the ordinance that sets penalties for people violating that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I am not seeing any other folks in the comment box right now. We have gone around the room once. I'm going to go back up to the motion. There we go. So the motion that is on the table is to adopt ordinance number 2907 as amended, making violation of the curfew imposed by Mayor Pauli's June 1, 2020 Declaration of Civil Emergency to be a criminal misdemeanor, declaring an emergency and establishing an immediate effective date. Check one more time to see if there's any more comments, and I don't see any. I'm going to call for the vote on that motion, and we'll do a roll call vote with the clerk.
Councilmember De Michele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Nay.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one nay. Councilmember Hall is dissenting.
Thank you very much. That was an ordinance, and five votes were needed. Six, one is passing vote count. Thank you all for that conversation and the work that you had to do tonight with us on camera. And as I said again, this is highly unusual. And also thank you to the staff team and our city attorney, Jim Haney, for being able to be flexible with us as we went through that. Moving to the regular business, AB 7926, the first 2020 budget amendment, and eight on that item, and AB 7930, the 2020 budget reauthorization. So there are two agenda bills under regular business tonight, but only one proposed opt action, which is the adoption of an ordinance that encompasses them both. Both items were presented at the May 18 council meeting. Council members had requested follow-up information on AB 7930, the 2020 budget reallocations, and both meetings were held over till tonight. Staff have provided the requested information in the agenda packet, and I'd like to see if City Administrator Bob Kowits has any comments that he would like to add before we start.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, no. Beginning on page 102 of your packet is the additional spreadsheet that was provided. We have a number of staff members on the line, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go back to the comments box when I can find it, for questions. Okay. Council President Hunt, this is an opportunity while we are seeing if there are questions for you to talk about any public comment that was received by email on any of these items.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. We did receive three emails from community members that provided comments on these items. We received a comment wanting the city council to have a role in the deliberation and to do their due diligence on this budget authorization process as it changes from what our previous practice was. We received a comment wanting to know more about what it actually means for the parks projects that are being cut and the other projects where the budget is being cut. So what actually is being cut in terms of amenities and other things that will actually be implemented with those changes? So request for more information. And then also question, similar, similar comment, but with questions about hillside park reduction and what that means, but then also wanting to know more about how the changes were being prioritized and how the changes reflected community values. And that summarizes the comments we received.
Thank you very much. And in the meantime, I see that Councilmember Walsh has a comment, actually.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. This was something that I kind of brought up in the last meeting, the sense of, hey, there are some things that aren't being fully funded to the same amount. So we want some transparency here in order to communicate to both us and the public, the community, about what those changes are, what the expected impacts are. And I think this does it. I think there's still some concerns over the sense of when will things come back? So I would just ask the administration for continued transparency and perhaps a future date when we can expect an update. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. City Administrator Bob Kowits, do you have some comments to add?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Walsh. We'll be back with your next study session next week. We'll give an update on the work plan. We'll have an update on capital projects. Again, we are still trying to, a $10 million anticipated revenue gap. And so with these changes, we still are not there. And any costs associated with additional police officers on the street over the last several days and the next several days was not part of any package to balance the budget. So, you know, we're not happy about delays. We're not happy about projects not getting done, but there's some practical reality here, and our commitment to is we'll keep you posted as that reality changes, and we'll keep you posted as we're able to resume projects.
Thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowits. Council President Hunt has a question.
So what you just said made me think of this question, but as the budget situation potentially changes over time, are, is there the potential, or would it be likely that we might see as a council another large-scale amendments sort of similar to this with changes in project timelines? Or is this likely the changes for this year?
City Administrator Bob Kowits?
A week ago, I think I would have said full-throated that there were no or changes expected. You know, it's just very difficult to tell. I mean, we have been fortunate to not spend much money thus far on the events of the last several days. So I guess I'm just not in a position to make a full-throated statement at this point. It's our hope that we have a plan in place that makes sense. As you know, we're still waiting on the federal government for an additional cares or what's called heroes, so that may happen. It's not pending at this point. There are lots of larger municipalities around us who have incurred, you know, millions of dollars of additional costs that they didn't plan on a week or 10 days ago. And so there'll be pressure on the federal government to now fund those costs. So, you know, we're doing our best to be mindful. We want to make sure we have the resources needed to provide the basic health and safety services. And our commitment from the administration is to keep you posted to the best of our ability.
Council President Hunt, did you have any additional questions?
I do have one follow-up question. So a number of the, a number of the comments that we received from members of the public on this item requested more information about the changes from previous plans in terms of how it actually implemented, how it would be implemented. So I wonder, for people interested in those sorts of details, is there, what's the best way for them to get that information on a project-by-project basis?
Council President, members of the council, what we have here on the exhibit, I think, does a part of that. You know, certainly we're happy, we have all of the appropriate project department directors on the line, so they can answer any questions. Otherwise, I think we have, we've detailed what we believe the delays will be. If there's anything else more specific, Council President or members of the council, we'd be happy to try to address them this evening. Otherwise, we'll be back next week, the 9th, with an update on the work plan and an update on the capital projects that will incorporate some of this information as well.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that. My intent is not to get into specific projects right now, but I do get the sense that with all of the many changes that are being made to project timelines and scope, you know, there are specific projects that people want more information about. These changes are being made in a way that is unusual. And so to the extent that we can keep making sure that people have that information and that, and that they can let us know their, their comments on those changes so that we can implement policy that reflects, that reflects that prioritization, that would be helpful. So I would just ask that as we continue to get information about the timelines and changes in implementation of projects, that we keep making that information public.
We will.
Thank you. I am not seeing any other questions at this time. I'll give it a few seconds to see if anybody else would like to follow up. Otherwise, I would be looking for somebody to make a motion. Is it possible to put the motion language into the chat box, which might be the easiest way for a motion, a person making a motion to see it? That'd be great. Thank you very much. So the language is available there for someone to read. And Council President Hunt, would you care to make a motion?
Yes, this is Council President Hunt. I move to adopt ordinance number?
2908.
Reauthorizing remaining 2019 funds for certain projects and amending the 2020 budget as set forth in ordinance number 2888 concerning revenues, expenditures, and fund balance for various funds.
Looking at Deputy, Deputy Council President Ray, thank you. Just want to check in with the clerk. The council did adopt the ordinance earlier this evening. Did it have 2908?
No, I got that numbering right. This is in 2908.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Council President Hunt?
Briefly, I will support this. I think that we have a lot of costs that we, that are changing, that are coming up, things that we might want to do differently. The housing strategy, for example, has come up as something that we may want to reconsider how we can best address the needs of affordable housing. And so the existing work plan items maybe need to be revisited, but I'm sure there are other things as well. And so And so I support this, but I also think that we need to probably continually revisit these items and also look more at our ratio of planning to implementing. This has been something that's come up in the, in public comments in the past and on this item as well, that we need to focus on implementing plans for items that have been demonstrated to be importance of the community, to the community. We need to proceed with those items before we start planning new items and the plans may or may not, plans that we may or may not get to. So I would, I would ask that we continue to revisit our work plans with those two things in mind. And otherwise, I'm supportive. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Council President. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Zach Hall here. I will be supporting this motion. I just really quickly wanted to say, I know this is a weird time to be going through budget reauthorization, and I'm actually very excited to be, to do it next year when we can experience this kind of reauthorization, reauthorization progress or process the way it's supposed to be. So, but I will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall, and thank you for reminding all of us and the community that this is not normally how reauthorizations works at all. Thank you very much. I am not seeing that anyone else is wanting to make a comment on this item, so I would ask the clerk to do a roll call vote.
Councilmember DeMichele? Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
And Beauty Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
That's seven ayes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. We are now moving into good of the order. I have everything lined up properly. And I know that there are several council members that have items for good of the order. I'll go to Councilmember Martz first, and then Councilmember DeMichele. And if anyone else has items, can you please put them in the comment section? It's my mark.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. So there's two issues that Council, that Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be voting on next week. The first, they voted to bring back a policy position to pick for approval at the next meeting concerning rate increases. And a question came up because the county has since had a 4.5% sewer rate increase. And so there was a question, well, was that, is this issue no longer a big deal? But what I heard was that they knew the council was like, the county council was likely to vote on that sewer rate in advance the next pick meeting. There's at least one additional proposed rate increase coming up, solid waste, and there could be more. So the question is, how does the council feel about, basically, the gist of this was, and if you haven't taken a look at the material, that with all the other increases that are going on right now, as municipalities struggle with funding challenges, because unsurprisingly, we're not the only ones, it was felt that because of the emergence of COVID, this is a particularly difficult time all of a sudden to stomach a number of fee increases. And that to the extent possible, again, because of COVID specifically, to try to get some relief for our municipal communities. So with that, I will open up and ask if I can get a sense of the body that I can go reflect at next week.
And thank you. Councilmember Walsh has a comment.
Which actually turned into a question at the end of Councilmember Martz's commentary there. Is this fees that are paid by municipalities or fees that are paid by individuals?
Sorry, yeah, I'm sorry if I was not clear. No, this is to individual, individual residents of the county, the fees that they pay. This is not fees that, this will reflect with individual consumers, not our residents, not with, just to municipalities.
Okay, fantastic. Then my comment is that I am not very interested in a time where municipal and other organizations' budgets are so tightly situated to tell another organization how they should or should not express fees or, you know, their, their need for fees. I think it's perfectly fine to have a conversation about the effects of those fees, but to tell one organization they should not when others might still, it just seems like the wrong approach from my perspective.
Council President Hunt?
Thank you. I have a question for Councilmember Martz. So was there a discussion about the alternatives to a rate increase? Or what, what this would mean? Okay, so they, okay, it would just, the cost, extra cost would be absorbed?
Or deferred, the same way we sometimes choose to defer rate increases based on other factors.
Okay, thanks. So my comments are that I think right now, and these, and the rate increase would be passed along to the individuals, consumers, is that correct? Residents?
Correct.
So my, I think that right now, we are asking, there's extremely high unemployment, I think historically high unemployment, also a lot of additional costs associated with changes that have happened because of COVID-19. I think that right now, a lot of people are struggling financially, and I think that will continue. We have asked other, we have asked for relief in other ways, and I would be supportive of trying to get relief for individuals in this way too, because I just think people are struggling right now. So for me, deferral would make sense, but I'm open to other perspectives.
Thank you. Councilmember, Deputy Council President Ray has a comment or a question.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz, thanks for bringing this to us. Do you have a sense of what the impact would be on King County to not, if they don't increase the fees? You know, what, what won't happen, what's going to get deferred? What's, what's the impact of that?
I'm sorry, I don't.
No. So here's, here's my comment then. I suspect that they put together a rate case and they were building their rate increases based on, on legitimate needs. I don't think they're probably frivolous needs. So there are things that are not going to get done. So my desire, my, my gut says that the, the best path forward is actually to do the rate increases, but to do like we've done recently, which is to say, people who do have legitimate needs, that we put programs in place that give them some relief during these difficult times. I just don't want to forego all of the rate increases that are probably, you know, I'm going to assume are legitimate. And at the same time, I want to be cognizant of, we've got individuals who are, as Council President Hunt said, definitely struggling through this time. So some sort of a hybrid solution would work best for me.
All right.
Thank you, Council President Ray. I'm going to give a few seconds here to see if there's any other council members that would like to provide feedback on this item for Councilmember Martz. Not seeing any more at this, ah, there we go. Sorry, Councilmember DeMichele.
And I'll be very brief. I agree with Councilmember, Council President Hunt's comments. People are really struggling right now. And while we, I don't think that we can tell another government agency how to conduct their business. And so I think that just speaking up and saying, this is a very, very bad time to be raising those rates, and the impact on individuals will be severe. Again, I am, I've spent the afternoon hearing stories of people who are very much on the edge of being evicted from their homes through really no fault of their own. And so those stories are resonating with me right now. And I am thinking that whatever we can do to at least speak up, we, again, we can't tell them what to do, but we can certainly speak up and give voice to those stories to King County. So I would be supportive of opposing those rate increases.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hall would also like to comment.
Thanks, Mayor Polly. Yeah, Zach Hall. Just to say that I feel like we comment on other governments' budget and revenues all the time. I mean, I feel like if we had it our way, we would be getting streamlined sales tax revenue from the state right now, and we advocate for that frequently. So I'm, I'm completely comfortable saying that, asking for a deferment if at all possible and describing the situation here in Issaquah and how our residents could really use relief right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I think it's difficult for us to make recommendations when, you know, we don't know enough about King County's budget situation in order for us to make a recommendation. And I'm sure that, that, well, I'm not sure, that the need for the fees is, I don't know what the basis for the need for the fees would be. Certainly, there are needs. I don't know how important, significant emergency they are or what. I guess the only comment I would make is that sort of a general overarching concern about increasing fees during this time and maybe the first order of business would be the suggestion that they figure out a way to not raise fees. Deferral to me means that we just postpone the pay. And I don't think that that's an answer, because I think that a lot of people are going to be dealing with a lot of pain for a long time. So figuring out a way to, if they absolutely have to, if King County absolutely has to raise fees, figuring out a way to reduce it, the increase, or figuring a way to cut things so that they don't have a, have to raise the fees, I think would be a suggestion. But I think it is difficult for us to make comments in a vacuum, other than just some general, just some general value feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz, on that one issue, did you get what you need from the council?
I heard, I heard a variety of opinions. I heard probably on total, a little bit more of a nudge towards supporting the FCA position, but I will also convey the minority opinion and the idea of trying, if at all possible, to address it through changes in service rather than just, you know, ending fund balance for the county the way we sometimes do ending fund balance. So I will give a complicated and nuanced answer on this question.
Thank you. And did you have a second one, Councilmember Martz, from pick?
I did. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The second issue, and the problem with only having one screen, is around potential adoption of the Association of Washington City's adopted legislative priorities related to COVID-19 response and relief. Now, this was in an attachment to the packet, and I will just very briefly discuss those principles. And they were, let's see here, around financial support, maintaining critical state-shared revenues, providing fiscal relief to cities hard-hit by costs of emergency response, fiscal flexibility, providing flexibility within existing restricted revenues to allow cities to use funds where they are most needed, regulatory relief, continue the emergency action taken by the governor to provide flexibility on deadlines for permitting and land use timelines, city-owned utility support, allow city-owned utilities that have waived late fees and shut-offs, and an extension of their ability to collect outstanding debt so that they can work with ratepayers to extend payment plans, provide funding to help offset losses related to forgiving late fees, economic stimulus, investing in public infrastructure projects is one of the positive economic multiplier as a result of economic stimulus. And then cities can also support efforts to help the most vulnerable residents and our small businesses. That's hard to see exactly how that's a state legislative priority, but the earlier ones form the bulk of that AWC response. And so I'm wondering if council, what the sense of the body is, if Sound Cities Association should basically piggyback off the AWC agenda, the COVID agenda?
Checking on the chat box, not seeing anybody with their hand up at this point in time. I would assume that if you don't get a lot of comments, that it's probably a general head nod towards we're typically in alignment with AWC on those issues. I will just check in with City Administrator Bob Kowits. I cannot remember if our policy analyst had a look at this, but I have vague recollection that he did, and he said it was in alignment with the city's current legislative agenda.
It is, Madam Mayor. And the managers and city administrators in King County have also talked about this, and I think there's been agreement among all of us that it makes sense to move forward in this direction.
All right. Well then.
Still not seeing any comments in the chat box. So Councilmember Martz, I think you're looking good to go.
I will give a robust and full-throated enthusiasm for this, for this particular item. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That concludes my questions for good of the order.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. We're going to go to Councilmember DeMichele, who has an item. And if anyone else has a good of the order item, could you please let me know through the chat box? Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. And forgive me, fellow council members, but I did write out my remarks because I knew that we had very limited time tonight, so I'm just going to read them to you. I forwarded a letter from the Washington Anti-Poverty Advocacy Group earlier this week, and the letter was distributed to the Eastside Human Services Forum Board Member following last Tuesday's meeting. The original intent was to gather signers for the letters, but with the deadline of last Friday, it was too late to bring the letter before the council for consideration. So I reached out to Lauren Thomas of Hope Link, who is the Eastside Forum's chair, and she responded that the best way to approach supporting the letter was for the council to write its own letter using the same or similar verbiage. The letter itself is two pages long, and so I will summarize its content. The letter is addressed to Governor Inslee and the state legislature, and it provides five guidelines for addressing special session budget issues related to human services. The first guideline is to lead with compassion, and each of these short statements is accompanied by a paragraph of explanation, which I won't go into at this time. The second one is recognize the problems with the old normal. The coronavirus pandemic has revealed many glaring flaws and inequities in our social safety net. The third is avoid the failed policies of the past, especially the austerity measures imposed on behavioral health systems following the 2008 Great Recession. I just need to let you know that in the human services field, there is a great feeling that human services took a big hit in 2009, 2010, and they were just getting back some of that funding when this, this crisis hit them. And so they are feeling very much that there are huge gaps that the funding has not addressed for well over 10 years. The fourth one is to tie social justice and equity to economic improvement. In short, do not put social justice issues on the back burner to be addressed in the future. They need to be addressed now if we're to have a good recovery for everyone. And finally, work to fix the state's revenue system that greatly penalizes the poor in Washington State. And as you, I'm sure you're aware, the poor in Washington State pay about 17% of their income in sales tax. And as you, I'm sure you're aware, the poor in Washington State pay about 17% of their income in sales tax. The middle class pays about 10%, and the top 1% to 2% pay about 3% of their income in sales tax. So poor people are paying a much larger portion of their income in, to feed that state revenue system. I also want to come into the council the draft report from Governor Inslee's Anti-Poverty Task Force, which provides a mountain of data about how poverty is increasing in Washington State and its impacts on our social fabric. And that report, of course, was prepared and distributed prior to the current situation when so many people have lost jobs. In that report, 25% of Washington State residents are struggling with poverty, and I'm sure it's going to be much higher when the full impact of COVID is, is understood. So I'm hoping that at least two of my fellow council members will join me in supporting the council's consideration of signing this letter. And I'm hoping that we can put it on an agenda sooner rather than later. I would hope that we could put it on the June 15th City Council Agenda for Consideration. And that's, that's my ask there.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. It looks like Council President Hunt has a question.
Thank you. So this is a procedural question. I'm wondering, so Councilmember De Michele talked about having a few council members or several council members sign on. Are there other ways that the city, perhaps if we, you know, if we come to an agreement that we're all interested in signing on to such a letter, could we direct the administration right now more informally? What are our options for this?
That's a great question. I believe you do have options. I'll let Administrator Bob Kowitz go through them with you. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, really, it's the council's prerogative. If you're all feeling that this is something you want to support, you may either direct the mayor or ask the mayor to send a letter on behalf of the full council. We could circulate it for signatures. I've worked in different communities who've done different things. The, the normal practice is the mayor on behalf of the legislative body would, would send the letter. But again, I think you, as the mayor said, you have a variety of options, whatever you feel comfortable with. I'm sure you'd be happy to help implement.
Thank you. I also think Councilmember De Michele was trying to follow our procedures, but since we are not talking about an agenda bill, it's really a letter to another government agency. I believe you can have a conversation right now and decide if you want to do it. Anybody wish to join into the conversation?
And just to be clear, the final letter, I asked Wally to distribute that today, and it's signed by, I'm thinking about 40 major organizations have already signed on to that letter. It should have, you should have received it sometime today so that you could look at the final draft and the signatures on that letter.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Goodman here. In terms of procedure, I wouldn't have any issue with the mayor's, the mayor signing and sending a letter. So for Councilmember De Michele, so can you tell me again here, just so I'm clear, the letter just urges guidelines for, can you just say those couple sentences again?
Right. It's, it's a letter that, that addresses five concerns from human service organizations. Eastside Human Services Forum is, is one of those groups. And I think what they were trying to do was formulate an overall umbrella of this is how we would like you to approach the funding for human services during, if you hold a special session, which I understand is, is very, very likely to happen. And I think also address the concern that, following the 2008 recession, that some of the austerity measures that were taken unfairly burdened people who are poor or need assistance in our society, and they don't want that to happen again.
Sure. So two thoughts. Number, one of the things that was going on in my head is just the, you know, the city has its own needs and requests from the legislature and the governor's office about budgeting and how much less or more, you know, how much, how much we don't want to keep getting our revenue cut and monies that we receive from the state getting cut. And so that would be a concern. However, I think that concern, unless I'm missing something, is not a concern if, if the fewer cuts or the more money human services organizations receive from the state, the less pressure the city has for taking on that burden itself. So I guess that's kind of what, what I'm thinking. I wouldn't want, every time we send something to Olympia, we just have to make sure that we're not undermining some other request or need that we have. And so I'm, so that was one thought. And then the other one was, yes, but if we help organizations from Olympia, then that also puts a less burden on the city because we're still going to have increased requests because of the increased needs. Anyway, those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. And next up, I have a council member, let's see, I think it was Council President Hunt. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. I, I support a lot of the content of the, the letter. I am wondering what the best way forward is. I, I don't see other cities on the letter or other council members. So I just see organizations. And so I'm wondering if we can get feedback from these organizations about how the city, and I, and I also see organizations that do operate in Issaquah on, on the list. So I guess I'm wondering if there's a way forward that we support those organizations in their efforts to address Olympia with their concerns. And yeah, so I, my, my question is really procedurally what the best way forward is, but not seeing other cities on the list, I'm wondering if that's, if signing on as a city is, is the way forward.
Councilmember De Michele, do you have any information to share on that? And you're on mute.
I muted myself, and then I started talking. The only comment I can make is that when I had the discussion with Lauren, that she was, I was really thrilled that a city might be considering signing on because it is mostly agencies. And also, as members of the Eastside Human Services Forum, there's four of us that are in that, four cities, it's Issaquah, Bellevue, Kirkland, and Redmond that are there. I was thinking that perhaps we could lead the way and then let our fellow cities know that we took this action.
And I'm going to keep going through questions. Councilmember Hall, comment, it looks like.
Oh, thank you, Madam Paulie. Zach Hall here. I just wanted to quickly say that I'm largely supportive of the content of this letter. But upon second thought, unfortunately, because I work for the state legislature, I'm not allowed to actively advocate for policy at the state level. So if we do get to a point where council members add their signatures, we'll have to gleep mine off. Apologies, Councilmember De Michele.
Any other comments or direction that Deputy Council President Ray?
I'm, I'm curious because, and this is, this is the question, but does this create any confusion with our legislative priorities? We've worked very difficult, diligently to identify those and, you know, charged our lobbyists with moving forward with those legislative priorities. And if we come back as a city and we say, oh, yeah, and also we have this one. I just want to make sure that we're aligning our communications with this, at the state level in such a way that we focus on the things that are most important. So if this is most important, then great. If it's not, then we run the risk of muddy in the water. So I just want to be clear that we don't, we don't confuse our priorities at the state level.
I'd like to get to the Administrator Bob Kowitz to provide some thoughts on that. We do have a policy analyst who works on our legislative agenda. We're in the middle of a crisis. This is a comment letter from organizations in response to a health and financial crisis. And what are your thoughts on, a couple of council members now have talked about potentially competing priorities or muddying the message or muddying our, the waters. What are your thoughts?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think the waters are plenty muddy. And as, as the legislature comes back to Olympia in the next eight, 12 weeks, they're going to have an impossible task. I think that, you know, it's really you as policymakers, if this is something that you feel strongly about, it's, it's absolutely in competition, but everything is going to be in competition. So I really think that if you feel strongly about this, don't worry about it, send the letter. There's going to be lots of discussions in Olympia coming forward. Cities are likely not going to do very well anyway. So I think that if the, if social service agencies can help, then that's perhaps less that we have to worry about with a list of issues that are already going to be pretty long for ourselves.
Thank you for that. That's helpful. Any other comments from city council members to sort of bring this around to closure about whether or not you would like to issue this letter with six council signatures? Another option is to, oh, Council President Hunt?
Thank you. So I, I noticed in reading this more carefully, I think if we were to sign on, we, I think firstly, we could sign on as individuals, and that would, that would be one way forward. But the letter as it stands is very geared towards organizations. It's not geared towards cities. It talks about serving people across the state. So I think it would need some substantial changes to actually make it be from the city's perspective if we were to sign on. So, so I, again, I agree with a lot of the, the, a lot of the main content, but the details of the letter are geared not toward a city.
Councilmember De Michele?
Yeah, my original thought was that we, over, in preparation for the June 15th meeting, that we could rewrite the letter to fit our circumstances and then present it to the council. So I, I don't think it needs to be done right now. It just, it, it's urgent in that it needs to get out before the special session is called. But I don't think that not doing it tonight would be a problem. I think we could tweak the language and get it ready for us as a council and pretty much express the same ideas, but in perhaps with more local focus, and then take it up again on June 15th.
I got a couple more comments here. Councilmember Walsh and Councilmember Mertz. And then it looks like Deputy Council President Ray and Councilmember Goodman. So let's go with Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Walsh. This is the first of what may be many letters coming across our desk for our support. And I have a difficult time as a city choosing whether to support human services or a police department or a fire department or the school district, all of which are going to be potentially facing, you know, budget issues at the state level. So at this point, I wouldn't necessarily be interested in spending our, you know, very valuable and minute resources on redrafting a letter when there are many other cases of this that may come up over the next few weeks. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Deputy Councilmember Ray, did I catch you or did you have an additional comment?
I, I think I did have a question, but I think Councilmember Mertz was up before me.
Oh, yep, you're right. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Mertz. So I would like, I like the idea of bringing back a draft that would reflect some of the concerns that were heard here tonight. I think that, I believe it was Councilmember Goodman, who pointed out that a lot of social services, if they're caught at the regional level, become less of a problem at the municipal level. And I think one of the things we've seen in the last decade is a pretty severe challenge at the county level to fund social services because the counties had a pretty severe funding challenge across the board. And so I think to the extent that we can help the state legislature remember these regional human services organizations, it helps, it helps us downstream because they provide holistic regional solutions rather than cities sort of playing a game where, you know, the, the cities have a less coordinated response from the regional solution. So I would like to see if we could get a letter that would get a majority of the council's support in two weeks. And I think that there's a lot on our plates, but I also think that social services, it was a crisis for the recession and the Corona apocalypse, and it's an even bigger crisis now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Deputy Council President Ray?
You know, I'm going to, I'm going to yield my time.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. So I'm shifting my thinking just a little bit. We also have, do we still have a lobbyist?
Yes, we do still have a lobbyist.
Lobbyist would still be in contact and helping during a special session?
Yeah, I'll let City Administrator Bob Kowitz expand on that a bit.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Goodman, yes, we still have a lobbyist. Yes, she's in pretty regular contact with us. It's an ongoing contract, and she will be there in Olympia during the special session.
Okay, so then I think, you know, the first comment I had was, in terms of procedure technicalities, I don't, I don't have strong feelings about whether the mayor signs a letter or the council or individual council members sign a letter. I think I do have an issue with the council or us going off. And I'm going back to the priorities and the work we do on our legislative agenda and all of the critical things going on right now with funding and our budgets. I think I would rather wait and have our lobbyist help us determine maybe what our best course of action is rather than send off, sending one-offs. And I don't, that's not a disrespect at all, but just sending things without the aid or recommendation or feedback from, input from our lobbyist. I really think that we engage them for that, for their professional opinions. And I, I just, I just think I would prefer to wait on it. So I think I'm, it's not that I don't agree with what's in the letter. I think the letter has a lot, as it is, has a ton of agencies signing on. I think it speaks loudly by itself. Other jurisdictions aren't signing on, certainly as of yet. And I think that we should wait and see what our lobbyist has to say, where we can, where we can be most effective in considering our own priorities.
So if I can summarize, I think what I've heard is that there is interest in seeing a draft letter, that it could come back at a future meeting, that there is interest in having some input from our lobbyists, which I think is an excellent suggestion and a best practice that we try to do as well. And then there'll be a conversation about whether or not the council wants to do it. Have I missed anything? Administrator Bob Kowitz, is that clear understanding of what we need to do?
It is. My only question would be, how would you like this to come back? Is this perhaps a study session discussion? Is it at a regular council meeting? I think the issues of, of where the Washington Legislature is going to be going in a special session I think the issues of where the Washington Legislature is going to be going in a special session may be warrants a larger discussion. As Councilmember Mertz raised, SCA has the plan for AWC, which I think is going to be sort of a guidepost. So if you'd like, we could come back maybe in July at a study session, talk more broadly about all this. Perhaps have Shelley Hedler, our lobbyist, join us, video link to talk about that. I think there's going to be a lot of issues where we're going to largely be on the short end of a stick, I'm afraid, exceptions. So there may be other ways we can be effective during the session.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman, did you have an additional comment? I'm not sure if I cut you off.
I did, thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. When you were kind of summarizing, I'm not sure. I heard what you heard and my, I'm not in favor of us coming back for the letter at this time. So I just wanted to make that clear. And I thought I heard at least one or two other council members say the same thing. So I just think we want to be very clear about what we want the administration to do.
That means I probably need some more direction. So are we just providing some context at a work session in terms of legislative priorities and what our lobbyist is hearing in and around Olympia? Or are we actually bringing a letter back? Council President Hunt?
Thank you. I think it was mentioned earlier that it would be best practice if we're considering doing something as a city as far as asking the legislative body something that we would consult the lobbyist first. So if that's best practice, I think maybe that's the next step. I would definitely be supportive of that as the next step, and then we can have that conversation.
Okay. Okay. So what I'm hearing is the council would like some additional information from our lobbyists before proceeding. Okay. Councilmember De Michele? Is that?
I keep muting myself when I want to talk. Thank you to everyone for the consideration. And I think I've heard some really excellent suggestions, and I am willing to certainly work with the administration and see what we can come up with. So thank you for taking the time to discuss this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. I'm not seeing that there are any other items for the Good of the Order. I would like to mention that the next regular council meeting is June 15th at 7:00 p.m. That council study sessions will also begin meeting again remotely in June. The next study session will be June 9th at 6:30 p.m. And the last item on our agenda this evening is the executive session. So as earlier announced, there will be an executive session this evening to discuss pending and potential litigation per RCW 42.3.110 for N1, for NI. And the item is expected to last 30 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow an open session. And although no act-
Excuse me. We do have a proposed motion for the council to take an executive in after the executive session.
Thank you. Thank you for correcting my notes. So action is anticipated to follow an open session. Fall in the, and you are, those that are attending, I have to check this with the clerk first. I had noted here that we are reconvening through an executive session. So can I check with the city clerk that that is true?
Mayor Polly, we actually are going to stay on this line for the executive session. So we have one caller. We need to identify before or once we recess into executive session.
Thank you very much. So we will now recess into executive session at 10:54 p.m. Council meeting, council members, I did hear that we're going to have a, I'm seeing in the notes, a short recess, but please stay on the line. From the city clerk, is, are we talking a couple of minutes or a five-minute recess?
Just a very brief moment so we can disconnect from our recording and then ensure that we have no one else on the line. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll take a couple of minutes, but we are entering executive session at 10:55 p.m. Thanks.